Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education meeting at Kingsbury Elementary School. We'll begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence. Commissioner Sweeney, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin this evening with the principal's report.
Buenas noches. Good evening, Kingsbury School. Would like to welcome esteemed members Superintendent Henry, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, and all the commissioners, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and students. This evening, we have a brief presentation by our media specialist, Laura Halloran, who will be giving a tour of our Kingsbury website, and Anna Goven, a third grade teacher, who will be presenting the Kingsbury School Garden that was made possible by a grant from the University of Connecticut.
Thank you. If you could introduce yourself.
I'm Ainaz Ramirez. I'm the vice principal of Kingsbury School.
Good. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Kingsbury. My name is Laura Halloran. I'm the library media specialist here. We're just going to give you a quick overview of how we use our school website as a communication tool for our families and the community. That is just a shot of our cover. On this slide, we're just showing some of the district and Kingsbury news items. The district news automatically comes in, and I update the website weekly to make sure that anything that's been going on in Kingsbury, photos, activities, the students get to see everything on our website. Mr. Brown asked me this year to add a guest link. We've had many wonderful speakers. We had a storyteller. We had some musicians that came in during Black History Month, and we also had wonderful students from Crosby High School who had a fantastic presentation, and the students loved it. So, we added that. Last year, we celebrated our 100th anniversary, and we honored Mr. William Pape, who is the publisher of The Waterbury Republican, with naming him, naming our newspaper after him. This is a place where we showcase student writing, photography, and it's really important for us to make sure that our students' work is out there. This spring, right now, I'm working on an interactive version of this, where students will be filming news stories, and when they're clicked on, you will actually see the students reading their news stories, and we hope that that will bring us to the next level with our students. In addition, I have a library and media website where I house all of the links that are important to everyday learning in the school. I have outside links to Silas Brunson Library and many other educational websites. These are just a few of the items that we have. We have summer reading posted already. I have an author of the month, and this is used daily by almost every student in the school. This is called educational websites, and if you ask anybody, any of the students, they know exactly what this is. They know that they can go here in a safe manner. There are places to search. There are places to have fun, and they know that when they get here, they can have many tools that they need to accomplish. Also, our Follett Destiny, which the city paid for for all the schools to have, we are finally automated at Kingsbury, and students can read online books if they don't have books at home. All they have to do is click on this, and we have about 80 online eBooks that they can read at any time, anywhere, wherever they are. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll get started. My name's Anna Goven, and I'm a third grade teacher here at Kingsbury Elementary. We started a school garden this year with a grant for 14 raised beds from Yukon. I'll be brief. I know you guys have lots of important things to do. So, we tilled the soil. We laid the beds back in October. Go ahead, Halloran. We used recycled materials, toilet paper rolls, paper towel rolls, strawberry containers to plant seeds. The families and the classes took care of the seeds and nurtured those. Smits &amp; Seraphina's True Value of Waterbury donated the seeds for us. The children donated, the LaBrec family donated all this soil, and the children had to do relay races back and forth to take it from the pile to the garden beds. So, they're just planting and enjoying the harvest. That on the right is our first harvest of strawberries. They're very small but delicious. So, we have a summer care schedule online so that the families can still come in with dates and times so that we can share the bounty with them. We partnered with several businesses in the community, so Smits &amp; Seraphina's, as I mentioned before. Shoprite came in and did a nutritional program for the children with a salad tasting, and they donated 20 plants for us. We're hoping to work more closely with Food Corps next year. It's a wonderful nutritional program, and they do a really comprehensive curriculum. So, the benefits, definitely teamwork. We're integrating lots of science lessons, real-world math skills. So, this is something that one of the classes did. The children went out, and one of our Common Core standards is to measure to the half and quarter inch. So, the children measured the cucumbers to the half and quarter inch and created a lime plot with that data, and then they were able to take that data and analyze it, tell us what they noticed about it. Same thing, another Common Core standard. The children took the data from the amount of plants that we have, and they created bar graphs with that information. This is directly from Smarter Balance. So, the most important thing that's been really interesting for me to see when I'm out, when we're out there working with them, is that it really is therapeutic. The children who have the most behavior challenges really do gravitate towards the garden. It's very calming for them. They're respectful. They're kind. They help the little, the kids who are smaller than them. So, that's been amazing. Another thing that I just noticed this morning was the delayed gratification. We're always trying to teach delayed gratification, and one of the kids who particularly struggles with that said, "Oh, well, this strawberry isn't ready, but it'll be ready in two days." And so, when they're able to learn those lessons, kind of out there getting their hands dirty, it's just the best thing we could ever ask for. So, next year, we'd like to have vegetable TP reading nooks. On the left, those perhaps with cucumbers or beans where the kids can go in and read, and they pick the vegetables. We also want to start composting in conjunction with our cafeteria here on a three-year cycle so that the children realize that not all of the food waste that they have needs to be thrown away, that we can recycle it, and that we want to put in rebar trellises and start rain barrels as well. So, it's been a wonderful experience for the children and for us to help them out with. It's been really great, and we're super excited about the things to come.
They disappeared. I was going to say, commissioners, does anybody have any questions of the staff? It's all good.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for my staff.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Any parents here tonight? Thank you very much. Mr. Reed? We're going to, number two, oh, public speaking. Is there anybody here to speak? Is anybody from the public wish to speak that did not sign up? Okay, seeing none. Number two on the agenda, Cabe Equity Toolkit. That was a cancellation. One of the facilitators, there was a death in his family, and we're rescheduling that. So, number three, we're waiting for the students to come. Correct, Mr. Reed? We're waiting for the students to come? Okay, you can't hear me. Okay. So, we're going right to number four. Richard Lemmon. Introduced by...
So, I'd like to begin this evening by thanking the board for the opportunity of having this review conducted in our district and to hear some of the findings or recommendations that will come from it. When I first arrived in the district a few months back, there were three challenges that the board had before me, and one was to ensure that we had some stability in the district. That was key at the moment. There was a request that we have continuity of effort, and that was to make certain that everything was continuing to work. And the third was about accountability at all levels and facets of our school district. I believe we've been able to accomplish some of that, basically just by the sheer experience that I have in terms of my background. Nevertheless, the moment has come for us to go beyond that. As you know, every organization needs to have a strategic plan, and a strategic plan is one that actually points directions that a district would take. It also indicates the kinds of things that are possible, but it also provides an opportunity for everyone within the organization to actually realize what role they play within that process. So, they need to own a corner of that strategic plan. And so, in furtherance of that quest, I sought the valuable review by, again, the Lead Connecticut team, recognizing that it had to go beyond just my own assessment of what was taking place. So, it is with that that we reached out again to Lead Connecticut, and this evening, Mr. Richard Lemmon, executive director of Connecticut Center for School Change, will give us his feedback. Sir?
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I also like to thank the board for having me here to present these findings. I would offer that, in some ways, this ought to be something that's celebrated, an institution that is willing to look inward and actually invite someone else to look at practices, systems, and structures, and think about how to move to the next level. So, it's an exciting piece for us, and we're deeply honored to have had the opportunity and deeply honored to have the opportunity to present the findings. Weeks ago, a team and myself spent several days inside the district. We did a variety of things in order to gather evidence and data about how the systems of Waterbury Public Schools were functioning. And tonight, I'd like to describe the process we use, present to you findings from that review, and leave you with some thoughts that are perhaps for you, but also perhaps for an incoming superintendent when that person is appointed, for thinking about the next level of work, the next phase of work for Waterbury Public Schools. I will, two cautions before we get started. The first is that there's quite a bit of information, and I'm going to try to cover it all in a rather efficient way, which means there are times I'll kind of skirt past things. And what I would invite you to consider is if there's any time in the future that you want to have us come back and answer any further questions, this will be a bit like the fire hydrant, right? You're sipping from it, and maybe in a few weeks after some of it's settled in, you might have more discreet questions, and we're very open to coming back and answering any and all of those questions. And the last thing we would say is, we designed this process not to render judgment about districts. We designed this process to spark conversations. We designed a process that was about gathering evidence and bringing that evidence back to the district and district leaders so that they can make sense of the data as they stock take and think about how to move forward, how to prioritize. And so, I hope it's received in that. It's received in a generous spirit and not in a "we have the answers for you." In many ways, these will be qualified claims. We'll have evidence for, but ultimately, what will be important is that the leaders, including the board and educators of this district, to look at the findings, take stock of the findings, prioritize the findings, and figure out where to go from here. So, on the second page of your packet, and you should have in this folder to the right, everyone should have a printed copy of that, this just provides an overview of the process, but I'll go over this verbally but without reading to you. The capacity and coherence review process is an exercise where a group of outside advisors come into the system, look at evidence guided and prompted by the leaders of the system, kind of pushing us in directions to ask questions, think about this work, sit back and identify patterns and trends, and then come back to the system with, here's what we think we've found. It is guided by a research-based framework that was developed by Lead Connecticut. The Connecticut Center for School Change, which I represent, was the managing partner of Lead Connecticut, which was a consortium of multiple Connecticut and national organizations that developed this framework. You will find, if you're interested in seeing the full framework, it is represented on the left-hand side of your folder, and it's included as an outside resource. If we flip ahead a slide, you get a visual schematic of this framework. It's complicated, but what you should see in that visual is that a highly functioning district is an organization of multiple systems and structures that need to be highly aligned. And that is easier said than done in large systems, particularly urban systems. So, the greater the coherence our proposition is, the greater the opportunity and the higher the capacity for that organization to actually achieve its aspirations on behalf of children. And this is drawn from considerable research on high-functioning districts and districts who have been able to move achievement and improve outcomes for children. Also, within the framework are a small number of kind of pithy propositions written in headline fashion to be easier to stick in people's minds. The first is that high-functioning districts strategically place their bets, and the idea here is that if you walk into a district and there are a small number of key priorities, that's an organization that has greater potential of achieving those priorities. A district that has 15, 20, 25 priorities actually has no priorities. Second proposition is highly effective districts, highly coherent and organized districts, deeply work on culture, how we describe, how do we do things here? There's a way that people approach working, and that culture is aligned with the improvement priorities. These districts also, as bullet point B points out, are highly aligned. They spend time connecting the dots between people, between systems, between structures so that all of the work is going in the same direction, and there's not wasted energy that's lost between systems, between structures, as people don't understand the work. And lastly, these are almost all the systems that we have studied where districts are able to move the achievement levels of students and shrink achievement gaps. They make deep investments in leaders as key people who build the coherence of the organization. So, investing in leadership capital is something that these districts do. Just a quick note about the Connecticut Center for School Change before we drop into the methodology. The Connecticut Center for School Change is a nonprofit. We've been in operation for a couple of decades. We exist primarily to try to improve learning for children in a way that is cognitively engaging and intellectually challenging so that we can change outcomes for all kids and so that we start to generate in Connecticut results for children that aren't predicted by race or income or any other classifications. So, that's the kind of who we are and what we're about. Now, let's talk a bit about the methodology before we get to the findings. We had a team of five individuals. I served as the captain of this particular visit. I don't know if my colleagues would be proud to hear me say, but if you look at those five names, there's 180 years of professional educational experience represented across these five folks, and those years have been spent as superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, researchers at top universities, professional developers, and systems analysts. We gathered data across a number of sources to try to make sense of what's happening in Waterbury. We examined official artifacts of the organization, anything from memos to minutes to strategic plans. We interviewed key leaders through the system in one-on-one interviews. We conducted focus groups where it was more productive to have groups of people represented. We did this with teachers, central office leaders, and even a subset of the board. We conducted surveys. I will just point out, probably worth making this point here so it doesn't come up later, you'll note that there's a relatively modest yield rate in the survey numbers. We had 196 folks return the survey. This is around 11% of the folks who could have completed the survey, which was one of the lowest numbers we've ever received. Now, as I say that, I think it's important to also note that we were really careful in using the survey data then. We only used the data when it reinforced findings that we were hearing verbally or that we were seeing in artifacts because we were a bit cautious about that. But we have no reason to suspect that the folks who did weigh in somehow represent a skewed sample, but statistically, we can't say that they are not. So, I just want to put that out there before we get into the findings. And we also conducted observations where they were, happened to be happening authentically. We'd sit in meetings, watch key improvement activities. And the last thing I would just say about, on this next slide, concerning the data analysis, our fundamental approach to this is we don't make a claim unless we have multiple data sources that triangulate that claim. So, if we had hunches or one individual made an interesting statement, that doesn't show up anywhere unless multiple sources validate that finding in some way. So, what I'd like to do now is to go into the findings. We've organized these findings by key components of the framework. There will be a lot of information here. I'm going to move rather quickly. I'm not going to read the slides. So, let's treat the slides as kind of background to the conversation. I'll try to hit the major points, and then I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there'll be a little bit of opportunity afterwards for question and answer if there's a particular place that you want to talk more. So, one of the first ideas of the framework is that districts that do this work well are highly strategic, they're highly focused, they have a small number of improvement priorities, and that that allows them to focus on what's important, but it also allows them to focus on what's not important. The quote you see in the PowerPoint right now is a passage that describes this idea within the capacity and coherence framework. I'm not going to read that to you. So, within the category of, does Waterbury have focus and has it placed its bets? Here are the findings relative to that. When we went out through the system, either through interviews or focus groups, and we asked people to describe what's the district working on, to a person, people were very clear that this is a district trying to improve performance and that it's performance relative to measurable achievement indicators. So, that was rather consistent. You might say, "Well, that's obvious," but that's not always obvious in some districts where that might not be as much of a priority, or there might be disagreement. But that was rather consistent across roles, across schools, across the system. It's also the case that when we asked, "What are your improvement priorities? What are the core strategies you're working on in order to achieve improved outcomes?" It was not as consistent. We heard a variety of ideas and strategies and priorities and topics that you're working on. On this slide are examples of many of the topics that emerged. Though they range, I will also point out that these are not disparate, that these, many of these are connected in some ways. And these are priorities that the district seems to be working on, and that shows up in other places. But it also represents a degree of fragmentation. There's not a consistent message. We have gone into other districts where you ask everybody in the school, you walk into a random school within the district, and you say, "What are the priorities of this district? What are you working on? How are you working on?" And everybody will tell you the exact same three priorities. And that's a powerful source of goal clarity because everyone in the organization understands how their work fits into the broader mission. I can't say that that was the case in Waterbury. So, this slide basically summarizes the fact that your professional staff, and I'm using some survey data, but this was validated in interviews and in focus groups, that people don't report in high numbers that they in fact understand the district priorities. They do understand the priorities closer to them. They understand what their department's working on. They understand what their school's working on, but when asked about the district as a whole, there's a little bit more confusion. I'll say now that we used in the survey a Likert scale system from one to seven. One is strongly disagree. Seven is strongly agree. So, any number higher is good. Anything around four is a statement of ambivalence or confusion, and anything on the low side is definitely not good. And a number of folks, basically, were in the middle of the system when we asked people, "Do you understand the priorities of the district?" The average was neither agree nor disagree. It's not a strong point. And I will, I've included, again, I've offered a caveat on the survey data, but among the last eight districts that we've conducted this survey for in Connecticut, this is the lowest number we've seen. So, I think it's just worth thinking about, is that an issue for Waterbury? And it's also the case that there's not, when asked about, is there agreement among other people about the Waterbury improvement priorities, the number is even lower. So, when we asked qualitatively, describe whether the district has focus, we heard a range of findings or a range of experiences, I should say. And I have on the following three sides quotes of individuals who represent the range. So, for each of these, there were other people who had very similar comments. One educator said, in rather stark terms, "We have no focus. We have nothing that unifies us. Maybe there's something that unifies us at the school level." But then, a few minutes later, someone else would say, "No, we have focus. We're working on very core issues here. We're working on the obvious things. We're working on getting..." We're working on getting kids to school. We're working on numeracy, literacy, socio-emotional development of children. That's our focus. Doesn't that make sense?" So you could have two individuals who might even work side by side, who are experiencing the district in different ways. So this isn't a statement about you do or don't have coherence or focus. It's more of a statement that the people inside your organization are in disagreement about whether you have focus and clarity about what you're working on. Another's taken, this one wasn't as common, but I think it's worth pointing out, is we had a few people who talked about clarity of focus over time not being there. Someone comes in, we worked for a couple of years on a topic, we invest deeply, but before it gets deeply into the organization, we move on to the next topic. And maybe that's because there's been a turnover of leadership, or maybe there was just a new hot improvement agenda item that emerged. So the second category within, and if at any point, because I want to recognize that children have bedtimes, if at any point you need me to push pause to change order, I am totally flexible for the will of the board.
Yeah. Go forward.
Okay. You give me the hand signal, sir, if I need to. So the second category within the framework is around culture. To what degree is there a positive normative culture for how?
You know, this might be the right moment, and we should pause.
Sure.
And we can entertain the youngsters, and then we'll come back, since it's a new point. Thank you.
Okay. Pause. To honor our students this evening, Mr. Reed, and if you'd like to organize the students.
Mr. Schwartz.
Darren Schwartz is going to help with this, and we have... And Principal Henry is here. Welcome.
So this year, we were extremely fortunate. Last year, we had one student go to the national level of the Invention Convention. And this year, we had these two wonderful students go to the national levels in Michigan. And they had to go through a regional Connecticut competition and a statewide competition to get to Michigan. And I'd like to introduce their wonderful science teacher, Ms. Karen Reisinger, who will describe them.
Thank you so much for letting us come tonight. We really appreciate this. And thank you so much for all of your help and support in allowing them to go. Without your financial help, this probably wouldn't have been possible for them. It's been an absolutely wonderful experience for these two children. They were able to go to Michigan, to the Henry Ford Museum, and if anybody's ever been there, it's a fabulous place. I'm going to let them tell you all about it, but I'd like them first to explain their inventions to you. This is Nathan Abbott, and this is Sophia LeFave. And I'm going to hand it over to Nathan.
So my invention is the mini solar wind. The purpose of my invention is to help people at the beach or at a campground get a nice breeze on a hot day without spending a ton of money on batteries. So a description of how it works is, the mini solar wind is powered by five solar cells on the top and two rechargeable batteries inside. The batteries get recharged by the sun. This is the evolution of what this was. So it started out as a mess of wires and a motor. And then I got it a little bit better, and then that didn't work out, so I added some more solar panels, and then I added one more to make it run without stopping. I performed an experiment to see what would happen if I used the diode, which is this small box here, if I used the diode backwards. This resulted in battery drainage. I took a 1.2 volt battery connected to a fan and tested voltage using a multimeter, that tool. The initial voltage was 1.19 volts. After 30 seconds, the battery had 1.16 volts. After one minute, the voltage dropped to 1.12 volts. After two minutes, the voltage was 1.09 volts. And after three minutes, the fan stopped running. I wanted to use multiple solar cells together to increase the voltage. First, I tested the voltage of the solar cells. Each cell was between 1.2 to 1.5 volts. I learned that by connecting solar cells in series, positive of one connected to negative of the next, I could add the voltage together to make a more powerful solar cell. I added five solar cells together to get enough power to run the fan and charge the batteries. My initial design used one solar cell. When I tested it, the fan died after several seconds. The solar cell did not provide enough energy to power the fan. I used four solar cells to increase the power. The fan ran for a few minutes and then died. I added one more solar panel, and the fan ran without dying, and I measured the voltage of the solar cells and found .85 volts while the fan is running. This means there is enough power to run the fan and charge the batteries with five cells.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. The trip was great. I loved everything there. The Henry Ford Museum was awesome. And I'd just like to say thank you.
My invention is a flavored inhaler for people with asthma, because I have asthma, and I have to take it about like twice a week, and the medicine tastes disgusting. So I wanted to invent something that would wash away the taste. So I have the inhaler here, and then I took an empty tube of lip gloss and filled it with Juicy Drops Liquid Candy. Then I took a straw from a spray bottle and put it here, and I Velcroed it to the side. It comes in different flavors, and it's really easy to use. You just take as much of the medicine as you need, and then you squeeze it right out. It's great, because let's say you're on a plane, you can't go get up and get water, so you'd have that taste in your mouth for the rest of the plane ride. So this is portable, it's less than the amount that can go on the plane, so you have it right here. So the description of it is, my flavored inhaler has a tube of flavoring on the side of the inhaler, so when the user is done taking their inhaler, he or she can just squeeze the flavoring out of the tube after taking the medicine to avoid the medicine taste. The reason I kept the flavoring in the medicine is because if the flavor touches the medicine, the medicine will not be as effective in stopping the asthma attack. Because I asked my doctor about that when I had an appointment, and he said, "Don't mix them." So I decided to put it on the side. Later, when I can improve it, I would want a spray mechanism more like the one where you have the medicine, so you could spray it out, and maybe it could be on a timer, not as much as you squeeze it out manually. So my materials were Juicy Drops Liquid Candy, empty tube of lip gloss, Velcro, straw from a spray bottle, inhaler, and I used the clay, because I wasn't allowed to bring the medicine. And this is a diagram of how you're supposed to use it. I took it off the back of the box of the inhaler and added my flavoring into it. So first, you push the mouthpiece down, then you breathe down and breathe, you push down and breathe in, then you squeeze out, flavor it.
Wow.
So the trip was super fun. I loved the Henry Ford Museum. It was really cool to see all the old cars, because I love old cars. I even got to ride in one, so thank you for making that possible.
Commissioners, does anybody have any comments? Commissioner Hernandez.
Having asthma, I probably would like one of those pumps, because you're right, the medicine is disgusting. What school do you guys go to?
Rotella.
Rotella, okay. Can we see your inventions? Can you like pass them down for us? That'd be great. I want to say you guys did a good job. I'm glad you had fun, and keep up the good work.
Commissioner Harvey.
Vice President Harvey. Thank you. I'd like to ask, can I just, the solar panels, how did you find, how did you think about, how did you do that?
I got them out of garden states.
You got them out of?
Garden states.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
My dad helped me with that part.
That is genius. That is fantastic. Okay. All right, now, the inhaler, what flavors do you have?
I have blue raspberry, orange, cherry, and strawberry.
You have what? Say them again.
Blue raspberry, strawberry, orange, and cherry.
Does it really taste those flavors? Is it really?
Juicy Drops Liquid Candy. I had to try out different kinds of flavorings, because I didn't want it to be too thick for when you could squeeze it out. I wanted something like the liquid.
See, you didn't do chocolate.
I might be able to.
All right, thank you. Great job, guys. Fantastic.
I think you have some investors here for your product.
I'm 30% of the company.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to your teachers, and Mrs. Henry, and we're very excited about your inventions.
Thank you again. We really appreciate everything.
Thank you for coming. And parents, thank you.
That is so cool. That's exactly what it is.
And are there parents here this evening? All right, congratulations. Next year, we hope to have 10 more students going, right? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Enjoy the rest of the year. Thank you for coming. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much for stepping aside for a minute. We'll get back to...
I know, I was just about to say, I'd like to complete this presentation under protest, Madam Chair. That's a hard act to follow. I'll do my best. We were transitioning into the second part of the framework, which is about culture. I think the research is really clear, in schools as in other organizations, culture can make or break an organization. I've heard the following quote attributed to Peter Drucker, I don't know if he really said it, but the idea that "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." So it doesn't matter what grand idea you have to put in place, if you don't have the culture to pull it off, you can't. And so this, I want to go into findings relative to how people experience the culture of Waterbury, especially the professional staff, acknowledging this is not a review that talks to teachers, or students, or other community members. So one of the things that we were struck by is that in almost every single meeting, people proudly proclaim to us, "You know, we don't just work here. We were born here. We were educated here. We are Waterbury." And it's a powerful story, and with that, is that I've known this person for 25 years, or this person. So relationships seemed very prominent in the minds of administrators and teachers throughout the system in rather powerful ways. They have long histories with the districts, they have pride in the district, we'll talk about that a bit later. And it's also the case that we heard of many examples of these relationships influencing organizational decision-making, that the micro-politics of history start to come into difficult decisions. And, "Well, let's see who I can call to make the right decision." So there were a number of stories where people talked about what could have been a rational decision-making process was influenced by who knew whom over time, and the kind of capital that can get built up in an organization by relationships. Not saying that's a horrible or a great thing, I just want to make sure that was clear, because it emerged enough in the storytelling of individuals with whom we spoke. It's also the case that teachers at different levels feel highly stressed. I can't say that this is entirely a Waterbury issue. We are, I think, in the midst of a rather significant morale issue across the entire United States, and your teaching force seems to be in the midst of that. And they describe being overwhelmed by the number of initiatives, by the sheer expectations that the organization is putting on them, the expectations that the community is putting on them, and in some ways, experiencing some morale issues, because that's then juxtaposed with a public narrative about the failures of public education. And I think that your teaching force takes this quite seriously, and feels this and experiences this at a personal level. And I think it's just something to be very mindful of. It's also the case that a number of your educators experience Waterbury as a place where maybe they don't want to stick their neck out, that this is a compliance-oriented organization. Some people described that if I take too big of a risk and it fails, I might have my hand slapped metaphorically. And I would just suggest that any organization, and I think most public education districts are, that need to go through some rather significant changes to meet the needs of a changing economy and society, there need to be risks taken. So if your educators are experiencing, I don't want to take a risk, I don't want to put my neck, I don't want to be seen as doing something, I want to kind of play it back, because this way, at least I know I won't get in trouble, or I won't be scrutinized overly, that's not a recipe for transformation as an organization. Now, even though they say that about the district as a whole, there were a number of educators who talked about pockets of trust and collaboration. So that might be the way I feel about the system, but my department, my grade level, our school, they might report that as having a much stronger sense of collaboration. This isn't surprising. This happens in organizations all the time. People often have an allegiance to their unit more than the larger organization. But it popped up enough that we wanted to acknowledge this as a potential area of strength, but also juxtapose it with the challenge of people feeling as if they can't take a risk. Number of folks talked about that they got some really good support in small collaborative groups, and even in the survey, one of the highest numbers recorded in the survey was the response to, "I regularly collaborate with my teaching peers," and over five, the average among all of the respondents was over five of the teachers that they, and that puts it into the "agree" category. So we also gathered some evidence that suggests, and I want to be really clear and qualify this, of at least some educators, I'm not saying all, but some educators who might hold low expectations for the students in their care, as well as low expectations for what they can do as an educator to change outcomes for children. And I think these are highly interrelated ideas. So when asked, "What are you working on, and can this really improve performance?" We would hear from folks, "Probably not. It's really other stuff that influences..." It's really, it's really other stuff that influences the outcomes of students. We heard some teachers, it was not universal, and it actually was the minority, but we did hear some pockets of teachers in some focus groups talk about, um, all of these barriers beyond the schoolhouse walls that we can't affect that are, that are the problem, not, not things within the zone of influence. Now that's, there's some truth to that. We know that there are many, in, many contributors to achievement gaps and performance that exists out. But when educators report, that is their leading comment on how do we change the difference. It's not a, it's not a recipe for success. When you walk into districts with, that have a strong sense of efficacy and capacity, they say, "Yeah, we know all those things are happening, and that makes us have to work even harder because we're going to do this, and we're going to make sure that each and every child makes it." Some sense among some of your educators that just school has a limited influence. It, we're just one of multiple factors and multiple institutions, and we ought to acknowledge that. And we, we don't know exactly what to make of this, but in the survey, when we asked people to talk about their colleagues, when we said, "Do your colleagues have high expectations for your students? Do your colleagues believe that all kids can learn?", it was a neutral score, the average score was a four. Neither agree nor disagree. And again, I would say it's not a, neutral is not where you want this one to be. You, you want to have a much stronger sense of, of efficacy. Teachers, and I think this is a big part of the feeling overwhelmed. Teachers feel, and administrators feel as if they know they have to improve. They're being told they have to improve, they're being told they need to improve now and quickly, and the results have to go up, but they don't exactly feel as if they have great support around that. So there's a, there's a strong sense of urgency, other people feel it, they feel it, um, other feel, other people don't feel it quite as strongly as they do, but it's creating some, some real pressures and challenges for them. Connect the dots, the third element of the framework, talks to the degree which structures and systems align to one another. If you have a vision of what high-quality teaching and learning looks like, for example, does your human capital system recruit for teachers that align with that vision? Do you have an evaluation system that is aligned with that vision? Do you have a professional development system that is aligned with that vision? Do you have an improvement system, continuous improvement system that aligns? So that's, that's what we're talking about here. Did, do the parts speak to each other, they're tightly nested? With, into this category, one of our big findings, when we kind of looked at each other as a team after looking through the data, we struggled to understand what was the explicit theory of action about how to manage the district. One way we think about this is, what does the district think ought to be tight, centralized? What should be loose, decentralized? And is there a coherence to that? Many districts have a very explicit philosophy. They either highly decentralize things to the building, and they have a theory about that's going to drive improvement faster, and other districts have a more centralized approach. We weren't quite sure what the approach was. And, and it might be there, we just didn't, we just didn't hear it clearly enough. Uh, there was also some concern among building-level practitioners especially of not understanding central office. Who are these people? What are their jobs? How do they relate to us? Now, that's not all, there were, there were, there were some really strong relationships people had with particular departments, but there was some sense of, "I don't even know, like, I don't even know who to call for a particular problem." And some people would report that, "I, I know that there are people who must be responsible for this function or this task, but it's so overwhelming to know, I'm just going to call the person I know, and I'm going to call on the, that person I've known for 25 years, and that person will solve a problem for me." So, uh, people talked about the fact that there's, there's work going on about assessing central office and perhaps reorganizing central office. People aren't clear kind of what's going to happen with that. And, and maybe it's clear, it's been, it's been several weeks since we've been in the, the district talking to folks. ILDs emerged as a, as a conversation, because many people talked about ILDs having power as coherence builders, and in fact, talked historically about some ILDs who really were. They represented the central office voice, they helped people at the building understand the vision of the district. But there was also some sense that maybe ILDs, the, the, the role had morphed so much that it wasn't exactly clear that they were those coherence builders, in part because they had been given a whole lot more responsibilities and different responsibilities than the original model of what, um, these instructional leaders were supposed to be, because the original model was fundamentally about supervising principals and coaching principals to become more effective. And there was some sense that there was more things put onto their shoulders, and that maybe they're not as, the function of that role isn't as useful in terms of creating coherence between central office and buildings than, than perhaps it was. Now, you have some assets here, and I just want to point some of these out. You have existing protocols, tools, and resources that are already working at connecting glue, and, uh, I think we would suggest that you really think about how to leverage these really well. You already have an improvement planning process, you have a vehicle for getting schools to look at data, create goals, and identify strategies for improvement. We heard that for some schools, this was exceptionally powerful, it's a living document, they're regularly analyzing the data and taking stock. Uh, and for other schools, maybe it was a less powerful document, but that they did have it. And that the document was supposed to connect to district priorities, so that's an important resource that you have. Uh, of recent, the principals' meetings, we got to see one, is this information exchange, and where everyone is receiving the same message from the same people at the exact same time, and it seemed like a powerful way of making sure that everyone's on the same page, no matter what part of the organization that they are in. And we also heard is a very bright spot that some of your instructional supports that are pushing into schools are being seen as highly effective and highly, um, highly supportive, and as sources of connecting the dots. So if you have a new curriculum you're working on, well, here's the person who's helping us make sense of that at the local level and try to figure out what it means at the classroom level. So these are real positive places and things to build on. That fourth category, leadership capacity, the degree to which the district's investing in leadership broadly, not just the principal, but up and down in, and into the system. So, um, I say this not because he's in the room, but I would be disingenuous if I didn't report back that a number of people in the district, from teacher to central office to board, commented on the kind of stabilizing and calming presence that your deputy superintendent is having. Uh, and that, um, it's, as someone said, a breath of fresh air, a calming effect, uh, and, and a number of areas, and working on putting some systems into place, hearing people, focusing on students, advocating on behalf of, uh, the district and staff and children, and then taking on issues that maybe in the past wouldn't have been taking on, and is turning right into them. In terms of, if you think of central office leadership, again, and this relates to a previous slide, principals experience some fragmentation and disjointed leadership from central office. Not entirely, there's a, they will say there's some really good stuff happening in central office, but occasionally, they're getting sent mixed messages, so this department tells us this, this department tells us that, and it don't, um, line up all of the time. And there are times when they don't, they don't really know how to seek out the right resource because there are a lot of people, and it's not clear what the, the function is. At least that's, that's how principals experience it, some principals. There are some challenges that we think that, um, that we heard in terms of central office. There are some pockets of lack of cohesion, this isn't universal. My experience of people is that people generally liked each other quite a bit in central office, they wanted to work hard with each other, but there were also examples of, of time where there was some lack of cohesion and teamwork that, that led to some breakdowns. Some lack of clarity and direction from the curriculum office came up a few times, some breakdowns in terms of curriculum, and we'll, we'll hit on that a little bit later. Uh, some variation of practice across ILDs. So if you have, you might experience the fun, you might experience central office very differently if you have X ILD versus Y LD, we heard a few times from principals. Again, central office being seen as a bit overstaffed and, and chaotic, and then some communications breakdown. We didn't hear something until late. I think a rather telling finding, again, I always want to qualify, since we had a low return rate on the survey, but it does line up with some of the qualitative data we gathered. The number of people who said that central office leaders understand the needs of building staff, it's a 2.21 out of seven, that's a, that's a firm disagree. So the perspective of building-level educators, the central office doesn't get what they're going through at the building level. Uh, building administrators report the central office, um, doesn't provide the necessary supports, but they do, do feel as if they're held accountable. So the, whether they're held accountable is a high mark, and whether they have the support to, to rise to the challenge is a relatively low mark. Principal leadership, principals reported that, um, they are feeling of late a bit micromanaged. That there are certain technical details that in the past maybe they just could control that they're having to ask permission for. And there are, there is also a little bit of frustration of, of some kind of mandated directives about, "Well, we're told this has to happen, and it has to be us, it can't be someone else at the building level, and that if that takes hours to complete that technical task that they feel as if someone else could do, it gets in the way of them being instructional leaders, guiding staff, being in classrooms, et cetera." So, a few other additional headlines, and we've organized all of the rest of these headlines by specific systems. And we think that this will be particularly useful for principal, central office, and the new superintendent in thinking about priorities moving ahead. So I'll talk about instructional guidance system quickly, instructional guidance, it's, it's, it's a, um, this expression is jargon, I know, but I'm barring language that's commonly used in the field. Basically, what it me, the, the, the simple way of explaining this is, how do your teachers know what to teach, how to teach it, and when to teach it? To what degree do you have a system that provides that kind of guidance? And, uh, about instructional practice in the classrooms? When we asked teachers and administrators about this, they said that there were some significant curricular problems. There were some places where they didn't have curriculum, or they'd been waiting for years for curriculum, and there's some breakdown in the system of development itself. When we asked teachers, and this is a very telling question in most districts, when we walk into focus groups, one of the first questions we ask is, "Tell us how you know how to approach teaching in this district? What's good teaching? What, um, what to teach and how to teach it, when to teach it?" Uh, many teachers said, "We're kind of on our own here." Now, maybe they're getting direction from coaches, maybe they're getting direction from the principal, but from the system as a whole, they feel as if they're, they're a little bit out there on their own figuring this out. They're more influenced by the person they happen to just teach next to than a more systematic approach to, "This is how we do things in Waterbury." There is, uh, there was some attention among teachers on formative assessments. There's been quite a bit of energy in creating formative assessments that can create data to inform practice. But what many of your teachers were reporting is that, in principle, that makes sense, but it only makes sense if the data produced are timely and relevant to informing instruction. And they were describing a process where those data don't inform decisions made in classrooms, and, and it was absorbing quite a bit of time otherwise. And a number of teachers report feeling fundamentally unsupported in the system. Professional learning system, this is the mechanism through which people get to be better at what they do. Principals, central office, paras, teachers. How do you organize people getting smarter and better and more skilled? Teachers and principals were a bit frustrated by the professional learning system and described, and I'll say with some frustration, uh, feeling as if there, there had, there were some last-minute planning. Uh, I, I think an expression used a couple of times, kind of jerked around a couple of times. They were supposed to be a centralized professional development, it was on the calendar for months. A few days before that centralized professional development, principals and teachers were told, "No, no, no, you, you organize it at the building level." And so that was particularly frustrating because they, they felt as if it represented a fundamental, um, lack of respect for the need to grow teachers and, and have a systematic system. Uh, there were some, uh, want for higher-quality facilitators, some access to higher-quality teaching and learning, and there was some sense of wanting some focus in the professional learning, not just a, "Oh, here's a, here's a new topic this month," but to what degree does the professional learning system have an ongoing trajectory that links to the strategic plan, and that is pushing people farther along, and it's not just reactive to, well, here's an interesting speaker who wrote a, a new book. Teachers basically reported that professional learning has limited to, um, impact on their practice. When we asked, "Does it have an impact?", uh, less, you know, 3.36, which is close to fundamentally just disagreeing, say that it has an impact on their practice. But the exception that we heard qualitatively, again, are those, those instructional experts who are being pushed into the organization, especially in math and literacy, who are, who teachers see as highly qualified and expert in the content area. So we're now on slide 36, human capital system. Human capital system is basically, it, it's beyond HR, but it includes HR, the fundamental ways in which you get a high-quality staff, from recruitment all the way to, um, exiting people who might need to be exited out of a, a system. Again, we, we were blown away by the number of people who say, "This is our city, we love it, we grew, we're byproducts of it, we grew up in it, we were educated for it." And there, there does seem to be quite of a passion and a pride. I think it's an amazing resource, and it's one we don't see in many of the communities that we do work with. So I think it's something to leverage. It's also the case that you have, I dare say, a kind of Byzantine civil service system relationship that I don't see in many public school districts where key roles, yeah, in, on the, in the public ed, under the Board of Ed, are treated as civil servants. And there wasn't a lot of confidence among people that we spoke that that civil service system actually maintained quality, right? A civil service system kind of creates a, a floor and hopefully gets you the most highly qualified, so that people talked about it's being really complex, it's time-consuming, and then furthermore, it's, it's not exactly the case that it predictably yields the best results. So I think that was a, a bit of a frustration, a little bit of a concern. I'm noticing some smiles among the audience as I say that, so this is not something that you are hearing new for the first time. When asked, "Does the human, the bottom line, does the human capital system of this district help produce a highly effective educator corps?", your educators say, "No." They say, "3.17 out of 7." They, they don't think it's really working to great. And, and I will reinforce this because, and I'm sure you have heard it, as leaders of education in the field, the number-one predictor that we have in the schoolhouse of affecting school achievement, uh, student achievement and shrinking gaps is the quality of teaching happening in classing on, uh, in the classroom on daily basis. The second is the quality of leaders that you have in the principal's office. Empirically, and it's proven over and over again. So if you don't have a system of getting the highest-quality educators into your system, develop them over time, and make sure you hold on to the most talent, it's a real problem for improving performance. In terms of human capital, there were some, um, concerns among principals that maybe they were losing the ability to create their own teams. But what does it mean if I'm a principal and I can't choose my assistant principal? And they would note that in most organizations, a, a leader, a top executive, really builds a team around herself. And what does it mean if that's being micromanaged from central office perhaps? If the screening is happening there and they're giving, being given choices after the fact? Another positive thing is that the recent efforts on minority recruitment in the organization get positive reviews, I know it's early into the system, that people get the importance of this. And again, I will reinforce, research-wise, this is really important. Uh, the, the evidence of impact on students of color, of having access to another educator of color in the building and teaching is, can be profound in terms of outcomes. So I would applaud those efforts, and I would, I would suggest maybe, I'm, I'm stepping out or just giving you a finding, I'm editorializing at this point, but I would say it's a, it's a really smart investment as a district, given the demographics of your system, and given that currently, right now, your teacher force doesn't represent demographically your student population. So improvement systems, again, this is that mechanism through which the organization gets... gets better. You do have a district plan. People reported, though, that it is a few years dated. It's less than clear among educators. Is it being used now, or is it totally shelved, or is it kind of shelved? So I think there's some want for some clarity. Is there a plan? Is it the blueprint? Is it something else? Is something about to come online? There is a school improvement process. We see, we hear a variation of the impact of it at the building level. It calls for some examination of data, flexibility to create plans and goals, and some expectation from central office that schools are using it in a regular way. And that's a really positive thing, and the question is, how do you continue to leverage that? And some principals describe this as particularly powerful and say that this really is driving things. It organizes, we have staff meetings on, have we really done the work we committed to at the beginning of the year? And they have reviews about how things are going. Governance. Governance is defined as the relationship between, at a very practical level, the board and the superintendent. The ability of a system to have a stable policymaking environment that enables the improvement to happen within. We heard from you and from educators in the system that there are some divisions within the board that are creating some distraction. Some of those are reported, not just by educators, they're reported in the press, so we pick that up ourselves in some ways. And inside the organization, this is not lost on key leaders. You have leaders with very prominent roles who will report that they're waiting to see who gets beaten up next in a public forum in front of a board meeting. And they're wanting to come do their best work, they're wanting to represent the district, and they feel like, okay, who has to take the hit this time? And that I think that that's a pretty negative sentiment, and I think it's something that warrants some attention. And I would suggest then that that probably means that there's some norm work that needs to be done, and I don't mean that just let's define some norms. Highly functioning boards, whether they're in public schools or elsewhere, create really well-defined ways of working together that create, that identify behaviors that are appropriate, and they also identify behaviors that are inappropriate, and they also identify mechanisms that when people step over the bounds, that are brought into play. And I think that that seems to be something that warrants some attention. And even when we spoke to a small group of board members who were here, that we heard kind of some different perspectives about what the district's working on. And not radically different, but it wasn't a singular voice of, here's what we're working on, and here's where we're going. Resource allocation, I know I'm hitting you with a lot, I told you it would be a fire hydrant. But another fundamental system that's important in an organization is, how do you distribute resources, money and people? And one thing, obviously, your resources are highly entangled with your city, more so than in most. That said, that we heard from a variety of sources, that the mayor is seen as very supportive of public education and wants the organization to go well, and often is advocating, especially in the budget system, but that it's very complex, and that there are times when identifying how, what are the numbers for just the Board of Ed side of the shop in the city? You have to then kind of do a forensics investigation to detangle the money streams, the revenue streams, and the spending streams. That makes it pretty complicated. And it seems as if this is basically a very natural occurrence, that the way that finances are done in this district was done at a different time, when there were different needs. And it might be the case, and we're not finance experts, so we were interviewing people about their experiences, but there are experts in strategic resource management in municipalities and districts. It might be worth having somebody shine a light and give you some advice on that issue. When we asked people whether the resource allocation process was fair and equitable, people weren't confident that it was. In fact, the average was close to a disagree, or at least a somewhat disagree on that. So I want to leave you with some, so let me say this. You might be experiencing this as like a barrage of negative things, but I think that our team didn't leave feeling hopeless at all. This seems to be a district that has a lot of energy in it, a lot of educators who care deeply about the kids of this city, and a lot of pride for the city as a whole. They don't want to go anywhere. They care about it. They love this place. And there seem to be a lot of opportunities that are straight in front of you. And we typically try not to do the next few slides, but your fearless leader suggested to us, no, you ought to push. You ought to give us your best expert guidance on what do you think about, that what should the next superintendent think about as he or she comes into the system? So these are humble suggestions offered by the team as a whole from the Connecticut Center for School Change, who were part of this review. The first falls under the category of vision. It will be very difficult for a complex, large urban district to make market improvements on behalf of kids without a very clear vision of where you're going and why. And that's more than a document that says, here's our vision statement or a mission statement. That is an ethos about, here's what we're trying to do on behalf of kids, and we're not going to stop till we get there. And so I think that getting there is going to be heavily about the relationship that you create with the new superintendent and trying to get on the exact same page about where you're going to guide the professional educators of Waterbury, and trying to develop a plan, and a plan that has stakeholder input, because our, there are lots of plans that ultimately become ineffective. And probably there are more plans in the history of planning that have been rendered ineffective than effective. But when they are effective, it's because people are engaged in the process of developing the plan, and they come to see it as something that is meaningful, that's not going to be shelved and gathered dust. So it's built into how people do work. So getting people engaged early and figuring out the mechanisms through which people actually work on the plan will be important. Central office, you're in the midst of thinking about the redesign. We would think this is an important opportunity for you to figure out how to best support schools, work on the structures, work on the systems, work on the culture, work on the routines. Make sure that central office develops an ethos around serving schools. We know it's there in big pockets. This is not foreign to the folks in central office. But make sure that that's the driving theory of action. Make sure the central office feels as if their job is to partner with school administrators and teachers, not just direct teachers and principals, and clarify what your fundamental philosophy of what's tight and what's loose. For example, do you believe that curriculum should be tight, that everybody has the same curriculum, but the implementation of that curriculum might be loose because students are different? That's just an example, and I'm not advocating that answer, but I think you have to answer those questions because principals will find it confusing if you don't provide that clarity. This will require, excuse me, require capacity building. Developing a plan for central office is a whole different thing than executing that plan. And my hunch is, you will need to invest in supports to help central office work together, even better than they already do, as well as reorient in a relationship to principals, and leverage the school improvement process, double down on it, link it to a district plan, and make it a living, breathing system within each school. That can be a powerful mechanism. Instructional guidance system, it is an incredible waste of resources. If you have thousands of teachers going home every evening, and they're spending hours figuring out how to solve the fundamental problems of practice that the other thousand teachers you have in the system are trying to solve the next day also. Some of that should be centralized, and some of that should be solved collaboratively with teachers. That's what am I teaching? How do I better engage students? How do I design more rigorous tasks? That needs to be something that the whole organization's working on. Create collaborative structures to solve those problems when they come, and make sure you design a professional development system. And the last point I would make here, I work with lots of districts in this state, and I've worked with hundreds of districts across the United States, predominantly urban, large districts, and many much larger than yours. And what I'll say, the tendency is to want to move really fast. Let's create change, and it comes from a good place. But often what that creates is superficial work that never gets deeply into the organization. So as cliche and trite as it might sound, go slow to go fast. Support the superintendent in slowly developing the right plan with the right people. Don't force a rush to action too quickly in the process. Next steps, you're the first group, including superintendent, to hear this first cut. We will be scheduling time to work with central office to make sure that they unpack the findings. Same thing for building administrators. So hand it back over to the chair.
I just want to thank you, Richard, for the comprehensive view. I know it was an extensive report, and I thank the board for going through it. This is, again, not intended as a panacea. Nevertheless, you will be involved in district improvement planning. There is a new person coming on board. We wanted to shorten the learning curve, so to speak, and provide enough background information that will help support a direction sooner rather than later. And all this does is give you an opportunity to determine what things should continue, what things you need to adjust, and ultimately, what things you need to change. And that's in the spirit in which, you know, this was being done. So I thank you, sir, and.
Turn you over to the board chair.
Thank you, Deputy. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. It's an interesting report. I don't think we're surprised on too many of your slides. However, I think coming from a third party is of value. I am going to bring the one slide about the board to work and let the private sector know that if you don't like the boss being tough on you, just say so, and we'll dial it back. That was editorial. Obviously, with the numbers you received, there's no statistical conclusion. But I also did not see a professional conclusion. Is there anything you could lend to us in the form of a conclusion?
So I'm not exactly sure how to interpret that. So I think we feel as if the, we feel confidence in the claims we're making. So when you see a statement up with a survey data point, we only put it up when it also was validated by other data sources. So I think our humble interpretation is that this is an organization with great people working within less-than-great systems. People working hard, people committed on behalf of kids, and people who can't realize their individual and collective potential because you have systems that either haven't been fully designed, or they don't speak to each other. A professional learning system that's not highly aligned with your learning, with your improvement system or your human capital system creates lots of opportunity for atomization, distraction, fragmentation of the organization. So I think that we worry a bit, just, this isn't a, we wouldn't make the claim that this is a coherent system. And in fact, there are lots of degrees of incoherence, and it's not because humans are trying to make it incoherent. It's that you haven't figured out how to build the system over time so that it can have that impact. I think that's kind of the, and I'm not trying to dodge anything, I think that to us is one of the biggest takeaways for Waterbury. So I think that the work of the next superintendent, who will receive a district that has had waves and waves of school improvement, it's not starting from scratch, but will still have to do some fundamental systems building. And if that person doesn't do the fundamental systems building, it won't matter how charismatic they are, how smart they are, when they leave, it'll all be gone again.
Okay. One last thing. I couldn't agree more. We have not done a good job of giving curriculum, or guidance, or professional development. We are absolutely guilty of that, and we know that. Civil service, a whole nother conversation. It wasn't in your slides, but please let me know that at least some response were, even though I've been dealt a bad hand, there's things I could do better. Because the material you presented, that did not come across.
You mean that educators were feeling that? Like, I'm trying to understand the question.
Well, they're, I'm agreeing with you, we don't give them the perfect workplace, work tools, et cetera. However, I never heard in any slide, and there's 45 of them, that, that being said, I could still do better. And I know our teachers think that, but I'm not seeing that in your report.
And that, I would say, I want to make sure before I, like, I want to agree with your statement, but I'm trying to make sure that I do it in a disciplined way that's aligned with data. I think we did hear a number of teachers say, what was universal was, we're working hard on this, and we're not satisfied with the results either. So that's an important thing to build on. We also heard folks talking about, well, even despite the system, we're still working at it at our local level, and take pride in their collaborative units, the folks that they're working with. And we did hear some people who almost said, yeah, we're kind of doing everything in our power, and it wasn't even a statement about the systems. It was more of, we're doing everything public education can do. Now we need other folks to also step in. We need to fix poverty. We need to, and those aren't wrong statements, but they also don't reveal your, that, okay, but we're still going to get better. So I think that there was a range of responses.
I still didn't hear it, but that's okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. First of all, thank you and your team for all the work. This is a daunting task. It's something we face every couple of weeks. And I would begin by saying, I don't think I disagree with the word you wrote on this page. And I think if any of us are shocked, we need to look in the mirror a little bit. You know, as a guy who does focus grouping and polling and surveys in his daily life as well, what does it say to you that only 11% of the potential respondents cared enough to write back?
It's a really good question, and we puzzled over that. It could be a fundamental systems breakdown. It could be that we, that, because the way that this typically works is, we hand this task into the district and say, get this survey out. And we leave a big enough window, and we didn't even close it when we said we were going to close it to try to wait. So that fundamentally could be at play. It could also be a cultural issue. I wouldn't want, and these are just hypotheses, it is also the case that there seems to be a correlation, that the more coherent systems that we've done this review in also tend to have higher numbers in the survey, which to me suggests that it relates to capacity of the organization, efficacy of the individuals, an infrastructure for getting this work done, and that infrastructure for getting people to fill out a survey is the same kind of infrastructure that shows that you have systems. So it might be an element of low capacity in the system. So I, it would be entirely speculation to go beyond that. Those are all hypotheses. We were puzzled, and that's one of the reasons why. It's a long survey, and we stayed away from questions that we felt were standalone and weren't at all linked to other data points.
And I assume these were blind surveys, right? These were anonymous blind surveys? You didn't have to slap your name on them?
Yeah. Anonymous, that came straight into the center, that people did not have to worry about the district seeing.
That was the first thing that kept bouncing around my head as I was reading this. And then we get to a slide eventually, and I'm going to paraphrase, one of the educators said. One of the educators said, "You know, we get so many things every couple of years. Why should I buy into this when I'm going to have something else two years down the road?" So I imagine that probably plays a part of it, too. Like, I'll fill out this survey, and then in five years, someone else will walk in here, fill out the survey, and it'll be the same problems. And I think, you know, the other thing you touched on that I think is key here, and it sums up our district pretty well, is this idea that culture is the key. And the idea that we're Waterbury people. I've lived here my whole life. Went to school here, I work here, I live here, I'm elected here. And in many respects, it's a really good thing.
Yes, we agree.
Sadly, though, sometimes when you read the other reports here about, you know, certain people getting different allocations of resources or time or interest, or certain people having the knowledge of who to go to to get that thing done, I think, to a certain degree, it's a bit of a double-edged sword for us. If you are that Waterbury person, and you've grown up here, and you get a job here, and you've worked for 20 years, yeah, you probably do know who to call, even if it's not as advertised as well as it should have been from Central Office. But if you're a new person coming in from outside the district, and you're out there on your own island, it's a lot more difficult. And I think we've seen that when we've brought in sometimes outside people into leadership roles, that not always warmly welcomed. And this is going to ask you to try to give us some guidance that might be completely unfair, but is there a way that you have seen a similar district that has a very parochial attitude with its people? Leverage that as a positive, yet overcome where it might be a negative? And if you have, what magic bullet do you have for us?
No magic bullets, but some specific strategies that I've seen other organizations try to tackle this issue with. One is, don't ever walk away from the asset of having people who have such pride. I think the way you frame it is kind of how we wondered about whether this is a double-edged sword. But having people who don't care about your city, who are driving 30 minutes in to come teach kids that they aren't connected with and drive away, isn't the recipe for success either. And then the other piece, and I think this is a broader issue for all of education, we are all prisoners of the experiences that we've had. And particularly problematic in education is that we all began an apprenticeship into what it means to be educated when we started kindergarten at six, whether we were teachers or whether we're parents. We all have very strong mental models about what's possible. I think one challenge that we all face is getting people out of their home classroom, home school, and seeing that it, in fact, can be done differently with similar kids and to different results. And that's not a recipe, because we often... We organize field trips for people. And no matter how similar the organization, the district, the classroom, we'll still people say, "Yeah, but that's not our city." So it's... People want to discount that. But there are places doing really remarkable things on behalf of kids who would be struggling in other schools or districts. And we have to show people what it looks like, what it feels like, what it smells like, and give them hope that, in fact, that's possible. And maybe it's not even dramatically harder work, it's just different work. So I think that figuring out how to help your community access external expertise, and I'm not meaning hire a whole bunch of consultants. It might mean, send them over to a few... Send them to a few districts that are really moving the ball in measurable ways and get them into those cultures, have them see it firsthand with a really disciplined approach. It's not a silver bullet, again, but the broader issue of how do you leverage the expertise but also get people thinking about what's possible? And I think you can't do that fundamentally if you don't empower people. If people who feel as if they own this system keep being told, "Improve, improve, improve," instead of being invited in to be the designers of the improvement, you're probably only going to get compliance. If you leverage that expertise and say, "Okay, let's try to identify these problems together. Let's make sure everyone understands the fundamental root causes, and then let's empower people to go solve these problems." Because in many ways, just admit, you're talking about solving problems that not many places have solved. I yet to have found the district that is fundamentally at scale eliminated the achievement gap, for example. So you're talking about building new knowledge and new expertise, and I have a fundamental belief, and I think it's borne out in some evidence, that empowering the people who ultimately have to implement the solution, to design the solution based upon a careful analysis of the problem, is more likely to lead to an impassioned commitment to that work than just being told from on top or from the outside, "Here's the next thing you need to be doing."
There was... I think there was... As I said, I agreed with pretty much everything you wrote, and it wasn't surprising, but there were kind of two things that actually made me angry. Educators, on average, were non-committal to whether others in the district believed that all students can learn at high levels.
That's disturbing.
If I was a parent, matter of fact, I am a parent. I have two kids. And I had the belief that the place I was sending them every day, no one could really say if they thought my kid could achieve. I'd be pissed off. Pardon my language. And you had noted that this was below the general average of places you've gone to. One, and I'm not going to hold you to the exact number, what's the general average of what you see in this? We got a 4.05.
That's usually in the fives. It's usually a full point away from where you are. I can't... I don't know off the top of my head, like, what kind of standard deviation that is in terms of the numbers and the spread. Yeah, this is one thing that jumps out to us. We deeply care, because the evidence base is really clear. Students will rise to the expectation of the adults in their care, no matter how low it is or how high it is. And we have really sophisticated evidence that goes back 50 years now, that if adults who've taken care of kids have low expectations, that's exactly the result that the kids will give you. And so it's a big issue.
And I know it's 11%, so I'm not going to stake my life on it, but at the same time, you know, 90% of these pages are people saying, you know, "It's Central Office, it's the administrator for this." Everyone else could be doing everything perfectly. If the people engaging these kids each day don't think they're worth it, none of the rest matters. So it's... There was a couple of things in here that bothered me, where there's one reality being portrayed on this page, and then on this page, there's something that's incongruous to what you saw on the other pages. And that one really stuck out to me. You can make... I'll take every hit as a board member. You know, sometimes I do attack the people who I don't think are giving the best answer, and I apologize for that, but I own it. But if we're working off this base, and I know this is people saying what they think other people are doing, no one's saying, "Oh, well, I don't care about the kids." But nonetheless, these are people working with their colleagues every day who have that belief. And again, it's just 11%, so I'm trying to... I'm trying not to go crazy. Nothing else matters. If that's our truism that we're working on, all of the rest of this is nice, we can get to it. That's our problem. We need to figure out if this is the real baseline of what our educators here in town believe. We have to change that culture before any of the other systems you put in place matter. Am I wrong?
No, I think it's important, and I would amplify a few things. One, you... That number represents a mean. So for every low, you have some who actually believe that their colleagues do. And you have folks who we heard evidence that they clearly do. So we qualified it as a sum, and there are other...
But just as many who are low as high, which is how we get to four.
Exactly. That's what I mean. You've got a mean. But you do have teachers who do believe, that's an important asset to leverage, one. Two, a number of systems address this issue through hiring, and I think that is increasingly the way that a number of really sophisticated, especially urban leaders, are screening aggressively for belief systems about kids and the ability to form relationships, with the assumption that you can kind of... If they have enough of the content basis, and they deeply like kids and deeply believe in kids, that I can coach the rest. Evidence is not perfectly clear about whether that does work, but it seems consistent with other findings in the field. But I would be really cautious about teacher blaming. And the reason I would say that is, my hunch is that most of your teachers who don't believe, those who don't believe, is because they actually have never seen counter evidence firsthand. So an honest statement of, "I don't believe certain kids can be..." might be because they've never been in a school where every kid achieved at high level. So they've been working for 25 years, and they've been working in a system that didn't produce any different results. At some way, psychologically, it would kind of be an honest claim to say, "Well, maybe they can't." And so I say that as a way of, I wouldn't go towards the teacher blaming. What I'd go towards is, you have a fundamental systems problem there. Because you have to figure out the systems that are going to make sure you have the right folks, then to make sure that the culture is about high expectations. And you have to do that overtly. You can't hope the culture will come along. You actually have to go right at the culture and move the culture so that it can sustain the improvement strategy.
And I agree with that. You know, and as I'm reading this and as I'm taking it all in, at the same time, I have my own personal relationship with this district. I don't pretend to know every teacher in our district, but I know a whole heck of a lot of them. And I've never gotten that vibe from them. I've heard, you know, "It's tough, it's frustrating, there is a morale problem." But I've never heard, "But I don't think the kids can get there." So when I see this here, this is kind of the first thing where I've really... It's ever been illustrated to me that people believe that. Because I don't think it is a teacher problem, and I don't think we should be blaming the teachers, but, you know, for as many of the teachers I know who go to school every day because they're professionals and they love what they're doing, and they know they're not getting paid a whole heck of a lot to do it, to see that there's a certain segment out there that can knock this number down is troubling. And I don't want to belabor it, but that was one of the things that really struck out, because, you know, and we all know teachers here, and we know how interested they are in our children's lives and how much they want to improve them. But if there's that many out there who maybe silently believe that, I think that's something we've got to do. The other thing that angered me, and the other Commissioner Van Stone touched on a little bit, and, you know, we have a whole report here that you spent months on, showing some not great things. So when we're here every couple of weeks and someone's sitting at that table, and they're reporting back on us, whether it's poor Bob Brinker getting yelled at, or Darren, or whomever it happens to be, we're not trying to dress them down to attack them, or to be mad at them, or to yell at them. But it's frustrating on this side of the board sometimes, too. And I would think some of us are better than others at posing those questions and doing it in a more maybe appropriate-for-camera way. But I think we'd be more complicit if we just all sat here and nodded and said, "Great job." So while I get the idea that, you know, maybe people don't want to come to the board because if they're reporting something that we're not going to be happy about, they're going to have to hear it, at the same time, I think that people expect us, if we're hearing something from that table that we don't agree with, we don't like that our direction's heading, or something else that isn't lining up to what our expectations are, that we verbalize them. That's the only reason we're here. If we were supposed to just nod yes to everything that came across, we could all just stay home. So that wasn't my biggest takeaway, but I think it... I understand the criticism, but I think sometimes that's what our purpose here is, to point out what we don't think is headed.
Just a quick response, just because we didn't observe... We didn't come in and sit in months of board meetings, so there's no objective stance on, "Yes, you're attacking or not attacking." I think the fact that people feel attacked is significant, because we, in the last seven, we haven't heard any kind of... When we've done this, the last seven districts we've done this with, that kind of statement hasn't been said in as many times and is in a vulnerable way as people are experiencing it here, for whatever reason. And there are other districts where they do feel pushed, cerebrally cognitively challenged, having their assumptions questioned by their board, but they don't experience it as attack, for what that's worth.
We're Waterbury. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. And I think, given the time constraints, we're going to take you up on your offer...
Please do.
...to do this again, and if people have time to digest this, then maybe we could have a deeper conversation. And I think it's very thought-provoking, and the only way you acknowledge or you can change something is acknowledging the problem. And I think this has given us some good information to move forward with. You know, it's... Some of it's tough, but I think as people who care about kids, and I have to say, every single one of my board, they are passionate about kids. And whatever we can do to move the system, we will do. So thank you.
And thank you. And if there's a way, once the next superintendent is named, we're happy to come sit in and give a briefing to the... Because the context behind the word sometimes is useful, also. We're happy to help. We want the transition to be successful, so thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just have one point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you can go. I just have a point. There's a lot of information in here that should be the basis for questions that we're going to ask the superintendent candidates. How do we create a common focus? How do we improve morale? How do we address the disconnect between the buildings and Central Office? I'll leave that for all of us to submit those to the president, but this should be the basis for the questions we're going to ask.
Good point. Okay. Next on the agenda is Mary Ann Merrill, District Parent Engagement. Is there a PowerPoint?
I gave one to Carrie, but I think it may just be on... Maybe on yours. I don't know if it's loaded up there. It probably isn't. No. All right.
If I could just...
Nancy, I don't think it's loaded up there.
Okay. If I may just have a minute of looking down at... What number is it, Kathy?
Item six.
Number six. Louise Brown.
You want Louise to go next?
We're looking at number six. And just so that you don't have to wait, we are going to move that to Finance. So we're going to have a deeper discussion on...
We're going to have a special meeting? We're going to call a Finance Committee meeting?
So you don't...
Can I...
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy, go ahead.
What I'd like to do is, I took a look at that, and I have a lot of questions. So I'd like to have that come to Finance, and we'll meet absolutely before the 28th, so that you can meet the deadline of the 29th. But I'll speak with Darren, and we'll let you know who we'd like to be at that meeting so that we can ask some questions about the list that's on there. It's very extensive. It's a half a million dollars, and I think it needs more than a workshop. And I don't want to have you stay here if that's what we're going to do when we get to you.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's number six we're going to send to Finance. Okay, Mary Ann?
Okay. All right. Looks like the PowerPoint may be up, and Nancy Vaughn is going to help me. Okay, I know you have a meeting at 7:30, so I'm going to try and move things along quickly. All right? So this is the District Parent Engagement Report, and I want to thank you for all being here tonight to listen to it. We're going to begin with the first page, and it is the spreadsheet, which gives all of our schools. And each of the schools have a parent liaison, with the exception right now of Jonathan Reed and Wallace Middle School. They will be posting, and they are posting those positions right now. The names of the parent liaisons are listed. We also have on this sheet the school governance councils, those that were in 2011 or 2013. And this year, we worked through the building process with the nine new schools. Also listed here are the PTA or PTO and the status of those schools, and I will talk through those additionally with some additional slides. And this year also, we worked to have a DPAC parent representative, and each of the parents' names are listed so that you have the name for each of the school. Now, if the school is a program, we do not have a parent... Now, if the school is, um, a program, we do not have, um, a parent in those schools. We're going to go to the next slide now, Nancy. Thank you. Um, the nine schools that have been part of the building process, um, the parent liaison and the administration have been very supportive, and, um, this fall, um, all 28 schools are 19 previous schools, and the nine new schools will conduct recruitment, nomination, and election in all 28 schools. We will do it simultaneously in the fall. Um, we've been in, I've been in these schools, working with, um, the parent liaisons, they've been very supportive, and the administration, so that everyone is ready for the fall election. We are going to use the open house as the, um, election process, so that we're doing things very simultaneously, and we have a very cohesive model in our district. Very often, when I would go to schools, parents would say, "Why in one school is there school governance and in the others, um, there was not?" But, as you know, the state had not been designating new schools, but when Mr. Henry came, he had hoped we could do it in all of our schools, and we have had really great response in the schools I have been in. Um, our next slide shows, um, the nine schools we've been working in, which are, uh, Bunker Hill, Wendell Cross, Generali, Kingsbury, Maloney, Reed, Rotella, Tinker, and the Waterbury Career Academy. And, um, I'm giving you some dates, um, where we did the training with the parent liaison and the administrator. And then, um, in some of the schools, we did an ice cream social. Um, at Generali, for example, I'll be going to do their kindergarten orientation. Um, at Kingsbury, they had their parents all set that they'll be working on their teachers. Um, at Maloney, on Friday night, I went to their hero dance, which was a great event, and I said to their parents and everyone that was there, "Okay, heroes, we would love to have you join school governance." So, it was a fun night. Um, at Reed, I'll be doing the training there on June 15th, and on June 20th, I'll go to their kindergarten orientation. That's a great event to get those kindergarten parents, um, ready. Uh, Rotella, I did the training on May 2nd, and Tinker, I went on, um, April 25th, and I'm going to a literacy event there on June 13th. And actually, tomorrow, I'll be at the Waterbury Career Academy to do their training. And each school received a binder with all kinds of materials and a jump drive on it with all the resources. Each school got the same binder, so every school got the same consistent binder that the other 19 schools got in either 2011 and 2013. We were very consistent with every school getting the same materials. Um, the building process has been great, and we also sent information home to the parents in English, Spanish, and Albanian, um, and we used the same, um, building material information, so that every school had the same consistency. We do the same thing with our recruitment, nomination, and election process, and I gave you a copy of the, um, flyer that we're, we have been using called Attention Parents. Um, and this way, the parent liaison can put their name and contact information, and my name is also on there. Um, it gives what, um, school governance councils do, uh, the great value that we have found in them, because the focus of school governance, as you know, is achievement. And when we talked, um, when the gentleman from School Change talked about a focus for a district, we know that our focus here needs to be achievement and giving a unified message, and we really tried to do that with school governance. And so, it's been very easy for our parent liaisons, because we're giving them consistent information to give out to their parents, and they've really liked what they've heard. And they said, "Gee, this is going to be really easy to do," and I'd like to hear that from them. Um, next, we're talking about PTA, PTO. Mr. Henry came to our parent liaison meeting, talked to the parent liaisons, told them, "You are our hub, you are the people who are going to, uh, recruit our parents and get our PTAs and our PTOs in our schools." And we've had great success. We had the PTA come in and do that state training, I mean, in the morning and the afternoon. I will say, most schools have chosen to go with PTO because of the dues factor, and so most schools have chosen to go with PTO. Um, and, um, we've been, um, very successful. Um, our two schools that don't have parent liaisons right now are going to wait to see, uh, what happens in the fall when they have someone, and I've given you, um, the list. Um, our last page is about TP, DPAC parent. Again, Mr. Henry wanted that DPAC to gain strength this year, have a parent in every school, so that as our meetings, um, have consistency, and the message about DPAC and Title I support and its programming, that we have a contact information for our parents, so we can let them know when meetings are, and, uh, we just held a very successful conference with great workshops for parents, and we welcomed the parents on a little billboard as they came in, so they saw their name kind of in lights, and we were welcoming them. So, um, this was all accomplished by May 17th, um, at our conference. Um, and I want to thank Mr. Henry for his parental support and wanting to have all the consistency in all of our programming. Um, I want to thank Mr. Schwartz, because we meet with him, um, bi-weekly, um, about what's going on with parents, and I want to thank Mr. Brinker, because I also meet with him and report to him on everything that's going on. And I want to thank all of you, because you're always supportive to everything we do, you come to our events, and you support everything that we do with our parents. So, um, here's our report, and I will have our school governance report for the 19 schools. I give you a yearly report on that as well. So, thank you, and I hope, um, if there's anything here you'd like to ask a question about, um, please feel free.
Thank you for your hard work, and I know that we are trying to build that cohesive system with your leadership and, uh, leadership from central office. And I guess, uh, hearing the, uh, kind of the report tonight, maybe you could think about, you know, how are we including parents and parent voice in our school improvement plans? Uh, you know, could we do a better job? I'm, I'm just, you don't have to answer me, but I'm just saying, in terms of strategic input, uh, are, are parents seen as integral to the process of school improvement? Or do they, are they seen as tangential? You know, I'm just, it's making me aware that all facets of our school community need to feel that their voice is being heard and that, um, we're all going in the same direction. So, I think we're moving in that direction, but if you have thoughts on it, we can strengthen that. I think everybody would welcome that. Vice President?
Thank you, thank you very much. Mary Ann, thank you very much, uh, for your report. Um, I just have a few questions and then a suggestion. Do we have any data on the parent, um, convention that was held in terms of attendance for this year?
Data on what, Commissioner Harvey, Vice President Harvey, data on...
I can't, I can't hear you. Are you speaking?
She doesn't, she doesn't hear you either.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any data on attendance at the parent convention for this year?
Yes, um, from past years or this year?
Do you have past years and do you have the current, what happened, occurred?
Yes, I do have it. Would you like me to send that to you?
Could you share that with us? But also, um, I was talking to Mr. Henry, and I said, I would be, in the interest of time, um, I have a, an ad hoc committee meeting scheduled, um, and I'll, you know, work that out with the committee members and with you. I would like to, um, extend that invitation to have you, uh, let's talk a little bit more about your report, because parent engagement does not only include DPAC and, um, you know, governance council, but it also includes now speak, um, and, you know, the questions about, what did we do with the, with the, the schools that did not have parent lia- liaisons? How do we engage those parents? So, I'd like to, um, you know, in the interest of time, invite you to our ad hoc committee meeting to address those questions.
Okay, so I'll get that information to Carrie, so that she can...
Oh, yeah, we'll follow the process, but, uh, I'm just saying, I just want to give you a heads up that I will be inviting you to our ad hoc committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the convention, it was wonderful. There are a lot of energy.
Oh, yes.
Great job.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? You have our...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gorman is up. Uh, request approval of amendment number one to the agreement with PTSMA Inc.
Good evening, everyone. The athletic trainer contract that we had has expired, uh, or will expire on June 30th. The original three-year contract has three consecutive one-year options by mutual consent of the parties. Uh, what I'm presenting this evening is, is asking for your permission to exercise the first option. Uh, we have negotiated, however, a change in the athletic trainer services. Uh, we had three trainers previously, uh, that were contracted for three schools. Career came on board with full athletics. They stretched those three trainers across the four schools. In order to remain in the budget guidelines that I was, uh, basically given to operate here, uh, we're going to be covering the four schools with two trainers. So, it is reducing some of the time. However, we're, we're able to maintain the same level of funding for this for a fourth consecutive year. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of that.
Commissioner Watt? So, how are we going to prioritize which games get covered at which schools?
Okay, that's done through, I, I'm, we're actually going to be meeting next week with the athletic directors. The priority is put on, you know, trying to cover games, and so the athletic directors, for example, if we have one trainer who's split between Career and Kennedy, let's say, all right, they will negotiate that, so that it evens out in the wash, but in one week, if Kennedy needs more than Career and vice versa, they'll, they'll collaborate on that. But it, what they will get is they'll get 15 hours each.
Each school will get 15 hours a week?
Correct.
Including game coverage?
Correct.
Okay. And if there was an opportunity for us to find more money to put a trainer in each school, is they, are, will these folks be amenable to it?
I could say beyond a shadow of a doubt that that would be a very welcome development, but to this point, that has not been an option presented to me.
But I guess my concern is, would, would they have the, would they have the additional trainers to meet our needs if we were able to...
We have three now, and so the proposal moving forward was to eliminate one of the three or reassign them somewhere else, because they were trying to fit what we were putting forth as a model of what we could do.
I guess my question is, I know there's three right now. If we came up with the funds to have four, one for each school, would they be able to accommodate us with four trainers, so that every school had a dedicated trainer?
I can certainly ask that.
If you could do that...
This is the time of year when the athletic trainers become available as they graduate from school.
Okay.
They're not real easy to get.
Right.
Um, but they would need pretty quick notice if that was our intent to request that, to try to get somebody under contract, because they're, they're basically going to hire somebody, because they know that they can deploy them somewhere and be reimbursed for, for paying that person's contract, so...
Right. Well, since we're coming into the summer months when nobody will be needed, maybe you could ask them to take a look and see what it would be for four trainers, 15 hours a week, so that we can adequately cover our athletes in our school system. So, if you could just do that for us, and then if you could get us a number, then, uh, the finance committee would take a look and see if it's possible. There's no promises, but let's at least see what that number would be.
I know the original proposal, Commissioner Watt, to keep the three trainers over four schools was 110,000.
A year?
That was where we had started.
Okay.
And then it was reduced to remain at the 88,000 per year. That was, the compromise was to go to two athletic trainers covering the four schools.
Okay, so we...
So, if we use that as a guideline, that's basically what they could do.
Okay, great, so let's, let's see what the, what they come back. We know we're at 110 for three, let's see what we need for four, and we'll see if we can at least get back to the 110, and we'll, we'll go from there. No promises, but we'll try to see what we can do.
Okay. If I may ask for clarification, Commissioner? With the contract ending at the end of this month, and I don't think we're going to have the opportunity to bring this before you again before that contract expires, could I suggest or recommend that we at least move forward with this one so far?
Absolutely, we would, we would move this forward and then look to amend it at a later date, once they came back with some numbers.
All right, I appreciate that greatly, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, number eight, uh, Linda Francis, proposed food service department relocation. Good evening.
Good evening. We have a PowerPoint presentation regarding...
You'll have to talk into the microphone.
Sorry.
The acoustics are very bad here, so you have to talk...
Sorry. We have a PowerPoint presentation for, uh, our proposal to move from where we're currently ro- located at 62 Harper Avenue to a new food service central warehouse. So, with the relocation, um, our intention is, um, to increase, uh, lunch and our breakfast served. So, previously, we had a breakfast increase of 132.5 percent, and that was from the year 2000 to where we are currently. So, that was prior to our move to Harper Avenue. That was prior to us going to CEP, where every student in the city of Waterbury eats free of charge. Our lunch, our, excuse me, our lunch increase was 54.8 percent from 2001 until currently, where we're at, over 2 million, uh, almost 2 and 1/2 million. Our, uh, we added both the after-school program and the supper program, and currently, it's, it's really draining, um, the area that we're at now because of the expansion. We're in a limited space, we're, oh, sorry. We're at, we're at, uh, limited capacity, so, uh, we're hoping to expand both of those programs, and along with the move, we could do that. We like to take advantage of buying and storing bulk product. Currently, we're spending 54,000 on off-site storage, and we are, um, having space for commodity food that might not be available at different times of the year. Our spending on our pre-plate food currently is over a million dollars, and our intention is, because half the district is, uh, pre-plate and half the district is, uh, cooking, that we would, uh, start to eliminate some of the, uh, pre-plate kitchens and do the cooking at the central location for those schools. So, the requirements for the new space, increased freezer space to facilitate increased food deliveries, refrigeration is currently inadequate, increased wood support storage and increase needed for central kitchen, dry storage increase will allow for growth of the after-school programs, increased loading docks will allow our drivers to load and leave without having to wait for deliveries from outside vendors, and provide a central kitchen for the city.
Uh, the graph associated with that just shows what our current, um, square footage usage is at Harper Avenue, and then, um, what we anticipate to need. This anticipation includes any growth that might be associated with the addition of Currently, as we, as we look at what we're, um, what we're doing now and how we operate at this moment, um, there are obviously costs that are going to be associated with this move. We're moving to a much, a significantly larger space, um, and with the implementation of a central kitchen, we'll be buying more food, uh, upfront, and obviously, there's a labor aspect that's associated with it. Some of those costs would be offset by not having to deal with the costs that we have now, um, as well as realizing savings for the buying in bulk. There's all, there's also a number of, uh, one-time costs that are going to be associated with this, um, that, that we've allocated, that... with this, um, that, that we've allocated, that we implemented on this, on the next slide. Uh, I'm sorry, that's a little hard to read on, with these colors, but, um, basically what we're looking at is, uh, one point one million dollars in, uh, in one-time costs. And that would be for brand-new coolers, brand-new freezers, all the prep equipment, everything that would be associated as a one-time fee, all the, all the equipment. It doesn't necessarily have to be implemented in one shot, but it is a one-time cost that does, that will be affected, affected by this move and change.
Could I just ask a question?
Certainly.
Is that self-funded?
The, yeah, the entire food service program is currently self-funded, and we are running a surplus above and beyond what the state allows us to have, which is what has been the, um, motivator for us coming up with this plan.
So you can rein, you're allowed to reinvest that surplus in this-
We, we are required to reinvest it.
You're required, yeah. Gotcha, okay, alright, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the increase, the, this plan does come with, uh, an increased potential of revenue. Um, as we discussed before, there is the associat, the food costs that, that we'll be able to realize by buying in bulk and not having to pay for off, off store, off-site storage. Um, but also just the, the sheer fact that every time there is a, the, the quality of the food that we're gonna be putting out is going to be better, which should drive participation. And what we have here on the, on this next slide is what we can anticipate from a twenty, thirty, forty, and fifty percent increase in participation. Obviously, we'll have minor food increases, however, our labor costs should remain relatively, relatively stagnant in, in that we won't be hiring more people for it. The number, the numbers that we would increase and the numbers that we'd be staffing at the central kitchen should facilitate up to a fifty percent increase in participation. Uh, so increases in, on the labor end of it would be subject to union negotiations and, and those sorts of increases. But, uh, it is, uh, as, 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 as was mentioned before, because we are self-sufficient and we are running a surplus, um, none of these funds would be coming out of the general fund. We pay, as far as labor's cost co, we pay all of, obviously, the salaries, but we also pay for benefits out of our, out of our, out of these funds. And the surplus that we have would be sufficient to absorb all of the one-time costs as well as the continuing costs. And, um, as you look, as you see on the, on the planet, uh, on the next, next slide plan, what you'll see is even if we see no participation, we have a, we will be able to replenish all of those costs in a specific amount of time. And it's, you know, important to remember that this is with our current reimbursement rates. Our current, our current reimbursement rates are going to be going up, um, just given by our percentages for CEP. So, we should see, I would anticipate, if what, what our preliminary numbers are for our CEP numbers hold true, you can have all of these numbers.
So, in conclusion, um, it would be a very minimal cost to the general fund, if any. The funds would come for the re, from the reimbursement that we're currently receiving from USDA. We currently have a fund balance of three point one million. As far as, uh, the meals are concerned, we're going to offer a fresher product that's prepared, um, daily for the next, uh, for the next day, as opposed to currently, we're receiving pre-plate meals that are prepared days in advance. We're able to adapt to the preferences of the students. Quality control would improve, participation would increase, um, we'd remain self-sufficient, and, um, we would have more space to store the food than we currently have, um, available at Harper Avenue.
It's, it's also important to remember that we have, uh, we have submitted this plan to the state, and it has been approved by them, uh, pending, obviously, board and board, board approvals. So there, the state is also on board with this, with this-
As well as USDA.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone.
Uh, just a couple of questions, Madam President, through you. Is it the state or the USDA saying you guys have kinda maxed out your surplus, figure out something to do with it?
It, it's the state, but what happens is, um, they allow us to keep three months worth of expenses on hand at any given time, and we've exceeded that by five hundred and sixty-three thousand, and that's the amount that they're telling us we need to spend down between now and the next school year.
And if we didn't have a plan to move, what would be some other opportunities to spend that money on?
Equipment-
Do they, do they give you certain things, you can do this, that, or the other thing with it?
Correct, correct.
There are, but not, I, we don't think that it would be at that amount of money, certainly.
And, and also, this is, this, this plan affects the both students. If, if we spent five hundred thousand dollars to renovate two schools, three schools, three kitchens, that only helps the population in those schools. This central kitchen would help every pre-plate school, which is half of the schools that we have here.
So this money would have to be used for a food service?
Of course, yes.
You couldn't just dump it into the school general fund?
No, 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 no.
No.
Give the Board of Ed, Commissioners raises or something?
There's not allowable expenses, and that wouldn't be one of them.
Alright, um, looking at, um, some of the potential repayment options, um, let's say it goes crazy and you're at that fifty percent number.
Yeah.
Three years from now, we're back at a number where the state's telling you, you got too much money.
Well, uh, not, not necessarily, because our, our expenses do go up at that point. Well, this is just to bring it up to these, these, back to our current level. So our three-month, our three-month, uh, operating expenses also go up.
Oh, I read that, I, I read the fund balance to be at the current level, which currently the state says you have too much money.
No, 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 not, the current, current physical dollar amount. The, the amount that we're allowed to keep on hand changes depending on what our expenses are.
Understood, okay. So worst-case scenario, the one-time payment costs you handle in just under six years, if you're in that sweet spot of twenty to thirty, which you guys kinda think you might be, it'll be a year and a half to three years. Getting back to fund balance somewhere between five and seven, so it pays, in theory, itself back off in a relatively short amount.
Correct. And again, that's under the current rates, which we fully expect a, a large increase on.
Uh, there was at one point, and I apologize if I missed it, were we gonna do a tour of the new?
I'm sorry?
Were we slated for a tour of the new facility?
May I?
Yeah.
They, there was a little bit of the cart before the horse that happened there, and so when you were done with your questions, I was gonna suggest that, uh, in so much that we were gonna try to put together a finance committee to look at the Perkins application, perhaps at that same evening, we could, uh, negotiate, work out with the landlord. We did go out to bid. I have seen the space that, that they are talking about. I'd like the rest of the committee to see it before we come back here on the twenty-eighth and, and, uh, make a decision on this. So I, I would very much like to have you visit that facility, uh, perhaps sometime between now and the twenty-eighth, but all the necessary procurement was done appropriately. I didn't think it, they had a couple of spots in mind, I didn't think it appropriate that we visit prior to a bid being let, which is why we stopped the tour at that point.
And that's fine, but I, I would agree, I'd like to see the space before we commit to it.
Right, and, and after that meeting that we had with, uh, or the tour that we had with the commissioner, we did have the health department out there, and they did give, uh, suggest, suggest to us that there would be no problems with us moving there.
Very good. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions, Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, I was gonna ask if they had a space in mind, but-
We did, we went out, they went out to bid. There was a respondent, there was only one respondent.
Correct.
Uh, we looked at the facility, uh, they met, they've had deep discussions about how to retrofit the facility, but I would like for at least the finance committee, anybody else that wants to join, uh, just take a quick walkthrough with, uh, Linda and Adam.
And so, we're gonna get fresher?
We believe so, because the product will be cooked off and then sent to the schools within a twenty-four hour period, as opposed to getting it now, the way we're getting it, which is frozen, and-
Yeah.
Yeah. For a period of time.
Okay, that sounds good.
In the bids, just so that I'm clear, were there any, uh, municipal buildings that were considered, because I, isn't the city building a big public works new building? Did they factor anything in that new building?
No.
We, we didn't, we did inquire-
We'd rather not cook, we're bringing the garbage trucks.
Yeah.
Oh, is that where-
We did inquire, but nothing seemed, uh, appropriate or sufficient.
Okay.
It's practice.
Okay, so there's no, so this-
There really wasn't.
Bidding process? Hey. I figured they're building a new building, they could build your whole, build the apartment.
If you can sell that to the Board of Alderman, Madam President, I'll buy your lunch.
Seventy million dollars.
Alright, thank you, oh, Commissioner Hernandez, and then, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sweeney? And then, go ahead.
Just a quick question about the, um, meals. So are we going to be able to kinda change them, do something different?
We're hoping to utilize more, uh, locally grown, uh, fresh fruits, vegetables, things like that, that we can, that we're currently not able to take large quantities, and, we're currently offering, uh, whole grains, fresh foods, vegetables, but if we could purchase more locally grown, I think that would, would help.
Also, also, under the current system, we go out to bid for all of our pre-plate meals, you know, but, we're going out to bid now for next year. So, some of this stuff might not be menued until January or February of next year. Not that it's prepared now, but, but by that time, you know, it, it might be on the menu four times from January or February to the end of the year, and if the children don't like it, we won't know, you know, we're stuck with it. We already have it, we've already, we've already paid for it. Now, u- under this new system, we might say, say, oh, this tested well, we're gonna do it, and then find out on the larger group, it does, it's not so, so much of a hit, so now we can, we can walk it back and use that same raw material- -and make something that might be a little bit more agreeable to the, to the palates of the children.
Alright.
Thank, 'cause we did get a lot of complaints about the lunch, supper, but, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Sweeney? So what is the timeframe for this to be actually set up and running in a new facility?
Uh, there, there is, there is some lead time that's associated with, um, with this. We have, obviously, the, once, once you get, we have your approval and then the Board of Alderman's approval on the, uh, contract. The, uh, the landlord would be ready to go to start retrofitting everything. He, but he does need, I believe he said between sixty and ninety days to do what he needs to do, get the current tenant out and build the, um, build the dividing wall that would be in there, and do some of the retrofitting of the offices. While that's going on, and prior to that, we'll be going out to bid for things like the freezer, the cooler, and, and shelving, and, and all the other things that we, all the other one-time costs that you see in the plan, um, so that once that is completely done, they could just go in and, we would have that process already done so that they can then go in and install whatever needs to be installed.
Okay, so are we talking-
We're talking-
Next twenty-twenty school year?
We're talking, we're talking moving in by, by January, hopefully.
Okay, so you're going out to bid for prepaid plate, are you gonna bid it just till January?
Well, no, because we don't anticipate having the central kitchen up and running by then. Just moving in, in utili, uh, recognizing some of the costs that are associated with having the larger space, and, and probably doing, um, the meals, uh, for the sum, for next summer.
We start off small, and start with the summer program next summer. First, move our offices in, and then move on to the summer program, which is much smaller than the regular lunch program.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Commissioner Adorno?
Hi, 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 guys.
Oh, hi.
Um, I haven't been, there is a miscommunication as far as the Health and Wellness Committee, so I wasn't able to attend any of the meetings this year, so, um, but we fixed that up with, with Mr. Gorman. But my question is, do you guys communicate with the Health Department in regards to, like, the carb count? We have a lot of diabetics in our school-
We do.
And I know that some of the carb counts are really high for them, so-
We do, we give them, um, monthly carb count values, and if the menu changes, we make sure the nurses are aware of that on a daily basis.
Yeah, sometimes. But I meant, like, I just wanted to make sure that when you're doing the pre-plating and make sure, you know, to try to keep it at a lower-
Sure.
Um, carb count, I, you know, especially if they're talking about obesity, healthy minds, healthy body-
Absolutely.
To really kinda keep that in mind, because I first, I, I've seen sometimes the carb counts are, are pretty high, and, and especially when the kids are in the middle school and high school, there is no recess, there's not a lot of physical activity, so, I mean, if there's a place that we could, I think everybody needs a little mental break, so I'm, I'm off for with physical activity, but, uh, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you very much, we look forward to the finance committee and a tour.
Just, we have the healthy food service.
And I guess you're on for the next one?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, number nine, request approval to participate in the healthy food certification program.
Yep, so this is the healthy food certification. We get approximately a quarter million dollars a year from the state of Connecticut for, um, being a part of this, which, uh, basically dictates what we're able to sell through, uh, à la carte sales in the schools, through vending machines, through school stores, through fundraisers, and the State Department of Child Nutrition asks every year that we come in front of the board for a vote, uh, as to whether you'd like to continue to participate, which I assume we would want to, and the fact that we would exempt certain, um, items at special events, uh, such as plays and games and things of that nature. We could, uh, vote to exempt those, those items.
Great. Any questions? Now, is this something we have to vote on, uh, as, or you're just, this is for-
The vote has to occur before June thirtieth.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll vote on it at the twenty-eighth?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yep, thank you.
Are you up, anymore? News?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, uh, maybe we could be like the New London District. Linda, did you see where the New London District has hired professional chefs?
I, I saw that.
Did you see that?
That's-
We should look into that.
I will, I definitely will. Thank you.
Exactly, we could train our own, you're right. See here? Alright, Melissa Baldwin, number ten, request approval of an agreement. And eleven, please. Agreement with the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association to provide student pre-vocational and employment training.
Good evening, everyone, Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education. I respectfully request that you approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, to provide a transition program for Waterbury students with disabilities. This contract did not go out to bid. Under section three, thirty-eight point oh-two-nine of the Waterbury Procurement Rules, procurement related to special education under the Individuals with Disabilities Act is exempt from bidding. It is a zero-money contract, so.
Thank you. Any questions? It's, it's a great program, and we're glad the Y is involved. Uh, number eleven?
I request approval of an amendment to the contract between the City of Waterbury and Evergreen Center Incorporated. We have, we have had a student at Evergreen Center for the past two, approximately two years. We, it operates a school for students with disabilities in Massachusetts. We have a contract completed with Waterbury in two thousand and sixteen. The contract did not include the tuition amount for the last year of two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. In addition, Evergreen Center increased its tuition in the current school year by sixteen thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. The amendment is necessary to include the cost of the final year and the increased cost of the current year in the contract. The amendment increases the total amount of the contract to five hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, eight cents, from three hundred forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars in the current contract. Contract term remains the same through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, is paid for by the general funds, a tax clearance has been obtained.
And this is the, my understanding, this is the third year of the contract?
That's correct, this is, the student is going into his last year, he'll also be his last year with us.
And they raised this last year sixteen thousand dollars? Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
Yes, the, the increase between this year and next year, it was this year-
Yep.
And next year was sixteen thousand dollars.
Did they say why they increased it?
It's, it's governed by the Massachusetts Board of Education, and they raise their rates for out-of-district, or out-of-state students.
Okay.
Previously, it, it was not under me, but when we did a search for a placement in the state of Connecticut, um, I believe Denise Carr presented it initially, we went to eleven or twelve different placements in Connecticut who would not accept the student. we went to 11 or 12 different placements in Connecticut who would not accept the student.
Thank you. Sounds like he's in a good place. Commissioner Ouatt?
This is one student and this is a residential?
Yes.
And he's there Monday through Friday, or he's there like?
365 days a year.
So this is summer as well?
This is his entire year.
And is there academic programs during the summer component?
Yes.
Thank you.
And do we know what the, do we have a sense of the reimbursement from the state?
Approximately, you know, Doreen and I just spoke about it. It's, it's probably around $75,000 to $80,000 a year, excess costs.
All right, any questions? Commissioner Sweeney. Is this an access student?
No, this is our, this is our student.
It's a resident? Okay, thank you very much. Next is request approval of a college readiness and success contract with College Board for Exams, Products, and Services to be distributed. Did we get something?
No. Good evening, Commissioners. The contract had to return to Corporation Council for one paragraph, but I did want to alert you to what it is. It is the contract that we do each year to offer SAT Day and PSAT Day in October. This would be for October 17th, having all of our students in eighth grade through 11th grade taking their, the appropriate grade level PSAT. And 12th grade would be taking the SAT. The contract should be available to you in, in your hands next week.
Is it a substantive change or just kind of a technical?
No, it is the standard contract and the cost with a discount that we have for, applied to it.
I have a quick question. Commissioner Ouatt?
Paul, when the kids in senior year take this, are they afforded the opportunity to send those scores to schools at no cost?
Yes, they are. They receive fee waivers for that as well as application fee waivers.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. And this is, remind me, is this our third year doing the SAT?
We are going into our fourth year now.
Fourth, okay. Okay, thank you. Next is Doreen with our money. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hernandez.
I just wanted to say congratulations to you, Dr. White.
Yes.
For receiving your doctor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
There's a doctor in the house.
Hello. So this is the monthly report for the month of October. This would be the 10th month of the fiscal year. Think this is where we kinda get to know, get a better handle on where we think the budget will end up. If the last page, you'll notice overall, from the operating budget of $158 million, we would go $1 million in the hole. Using the Alliance and the contingencies, overall, we should have a surplus of 2.5. As you know, we were carrying 2.2 in the budget. So, again, this is, you know, it's still April, we still have two months of expenses. Again, the areas of concern still are always the sub-account. I think we feel good with the utility account through this April report, pretty much on target. Our transportation account is still a little variable along with anything in the special ed side, but I think we got a good handle on that as well. So, again, anything that will fluctuate within the next two months will be reflected. So when you look at the budget tonight, you'll see that, you know, we have the 2.2 still standing and maybe offsetting with any type of contingency surplus that we may have based on the next two months. Any questions?
Vice President Harvey.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Hi, good.
Listen, can you hear me? You can hear me, Doreen?
Yes.
Okay. Do we, what section of the budget would the expense for travel come out of?
In the general fund budget here, it would be in the travel line. We have a travel expense line that would be, it's right here, the count 558000.
All right, 558000. All right, now, when someone requests to go on a trip, are, do we have procedures in place? Are there forms that have to be completed, et cetera? And is there an approval process for that?
Yeah, there's an approval process prior to them. They have to request whatever conference or so forth that's gonna allow them to travel. So there is an approval process first that Central Office has to approve. Well, it's the, first of all, the principal has to approve, then it comes to Central Office for approval.
Okay, so, so the principal has to approve it and then Central Office?
Correct.
All right, and, and does that have to be approved before the trip or following?
No, before.
Before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like we're in good shape. Yeah. Thank you very much for your hard work and due diligence. All right, next up. Our formidable summer school program.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see in your packet, we have the 14 different programs that are being offered via the Waterbury Public Schools for our students this summer. There are many other programs that are happening within the community that we support. There are also other programs that are happening within our schools that aren't necessarily run by the Waterbury Public Schools, such as the YMCA and other programs at Walsh that are, that occur during the summer. So what you see before you are the 14 programs that we run. I'll run down some basics for you, then I'll let the team here take it away from there. Sort of Success is our largest program. We have students from grades K to three based on the reading scores of the test that they, the assessment they just took. Based on that score, we usually go to the four pre-K eights. This year, we'll go to three of the sites. Reed has some work being done on it this summer that I believe Mr. Brinker will, will address later. We also have Rotella Enrichment, which will be at Crosby, again, due to work being done within the school, Maloney's program. We have a preschool enrichment program, which is actually from a grant from Liberty Bank that we're running with preschool students, which is a great little program. We have our high school summer school. This is where students can have credit recovery up to two credits. Historically, it was a self-sufficient fund that you would pay to come and get your credit. We have worked under the direction of Mr. Henry and with Mr. White here and our Ray Herrera, our supervisor for the high school summer school, we're able to provide that free of charge for Waterbury Public School students. We will continue to ask $170 per credit for out-of-district students, but with uses of different monies and pockets of money, we thought it was important that the fee not get in the way for students to achieve credit in the summer. The rest of the programs, not to minimize them, from 6 to 13, are all special education programs required for students via their IEP. We have our ABA program that will be at Wallace-Crosby. We have our elementary and secondary BBLC program, Scope program, Essential Skills, our preschool ABA program, preschool special needs program, our elementary ABA and CBL program, and finally, our adult education program. We did put a key in for you for our education soup language so that you know what program is where, CBT being our community-based training, CBL being center-based learning, ABA being Applied Behavioral Analysis, BBLC is our students for, in the Behavior Disorder Learning Centers, and Scope is for our students that are in the Social Community Occupational Program and Education. Again, summer school is, is, is always a fun time of year. It's a, our, gives our teachers the ability to explore and continue the work that they do throughout the year. It's a fun time. Again, we'll be, obviously, having a Board Visit Day that we do every summer, usually to the pre-K 8 programs where the students are coming from the elementary school. So be on the lookout for an invite to come. We'll invite you out to see the program. Students have a great time and we're hoping for a good showing this summer. Does anybody want to add?
I just had a question. I remember last year when you had given the summary, you were looking at identifying and enrolling students earlier?
Yes.
So that we wouldn't have that attrition, if you will. So how are we doing with the enrollment?
Well, specifically, I think specifically for elementary school, one of the issues is that we can't do it earlier because it's based on the late assessment, which was given a few weeks ago.
Okay.
So May 25th was the, was the final cutoff for that assessment. And we have to analyze the assessment. Any student that isn't passing that assessment then gets invited to summer school. So that, if you recall, is one of the ongoing issues every summer is that it's, it's a late registration. We do let parents know, though. President Brown, in January, if their student looks like that they're not going to...
Okay, that's good.
Right, if they're not going to make it for the summer based on the scores that are happening, then we do inform any student that is in the red that they may have to attend summer school for planning purposes.
Okay, thanks. That sounds good. Any questions, Vice President?
Quick, quick question. Dr. White. There was an issue in the past about transportation for our kids, particularly those in high school. Do we have those same problems this year? With busing and all that?
Well, transportation has, students have to self-transport. The bigger issue has been being able to afford to take courses. So we've always selected WHAMs because it's downtown and majority of bus routes can get, can get students there. So right now, the main focus is on getting students, that we've eliminated that barrier in cost and working on that portion of it.
Okay, because that, that problem came to my attention because there was a student, well, the parents, the parents said that they weren't informed that they had to provide the transportation and then, you know?
They should have a conversation with their school principal to see what options to help support that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to coming and visiting the programs again. 15, Glen Terrace Landscaping. Can they come to my house? No, I'm not here. Oh, I know, I'm only kidding.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Okay, all right.
Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Harmon. Chris was the, or is the carpenter foreman, but now he's the acting school inspector. He's been with the district for a long time and we're very happy that he's on board. Talking him or me? Thanks. Okay, we're here to request your approval for a contract with Glen Terrace Landscaping. We had initially come to you for four playscapes, but because the bids came in significantly higher, partly because of the design of two of the land, playscapes, we don't have enough funding from the state to cover all four. We are not gonna do Bucks Hill this year. However, the state did indicate there will be another round of the grants coming up and we'll put Bucks Hill in for that round. We propose to do Walsh, Chase, and Generali with this round.
Any questions? We're very happy about that. Long overdue, but we're looking forward to it. They'll be very excited. Any questions on those? Okay, next, Commissioner Sweeney. So this is just replacement of the playscapes?
Yes, that was the requirement from the state.
Okay.
The Chase playscape had been removed for the paving last summer. Initially, they said no, but we were able to convince them yes.
Okay, all right, because, you know, a little history here at Walsh. We built that, acquired that land and built that parking lot down, down at the corner with the hopes that at some point, the playscape and the playground would go beside that school where the parking is now. And I think we've lost sight of that and, and doing that improvement for the students. So I would request the Building Committee to take a look at that again and see if that, at some point in the future, we can have some plans to actually get that done, get that finished.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, I guess you're up on the, the whole summer maintenance?
Yes, we are.
Project?
Now, Mr. Harmon has provided a list of projects for each of the schools during the summer. These are not the Alliance School Improvement Projects. These are the projects that our folks will do under our maintenance budget. We can go through each one, but you do have the copies, I believe.
We do, we have copies. They in here? Oh, two piles, okay, I have it, okay. Sorry, I didn't go to the second backup. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Can't find the thing. There's 500 pages they send us. Hang on a second. Anybody find it yet?
Yeah, it's really long.
It's still in the playground contract.
Okay, that contract is about 75 pages.
Backup two?
It's in backup two. I got pictures of the playground.
It's a contract for every school. No. 84? Okay, I've got a, I got it at about 200, and it blanked out on me, but it was at about 208 or 229.
208?
Yeah. Okay.
There it is. There we go. Yep.
Got it? So you're gonna have a very ambitious summer. All right, any questions? Commissioner Vanstone.
Welcome aboard. Carrington School, HVAC, chiller repairs. School's like 45 minutes old. What, what is, what is the story with the chillers? And is this under a warranty? Is this?
No, basically for Carrington, oh, sorry about that. For Carrington, it's just, parts go bad after a while. I know it's not a long time, but we have to keep up on stuff. Otherwise, it's not gonna be working.
So what's the extent of chiller repair? Is it two parts and it's a half hour's work? Is this rebuilding the whole thing that has failed?
It's rebuilding it, basically, is what it is.
The President is not happy with that.
Sorry.
So in, in all reality, how old is that chiller? Five years old?
Well, the school's, how old is the school? Probably five, six years old?
And what's the general lifespan of a chiller?
Usually anywhere from, say, 10 years old, usually, on the average.
So we got a half a lifespan on it?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
And there's no recourse to go back to somebody to say?
I know, I could check into it, but no, absolutely not.
Typically, typically, the warranty on a part like that is about one year on that system.
And how many chillers does that school have?
It's just one.
Just the one? And do we have any other? I'm gonna ask you 100 questions you probably aren't prepared for. In our, all these other buildings we've built in the past 10 years, is this a similar chiller that we've used in other buildings? And are we having issues with those as well, or is this a?
Is it the same model number? No, is it, it's more than likely a different one. I could actually get the numbers for you if you want?
Not necessarily the model, same, same brand, same make?
Yeah, basically, I mean, they're, they're kinda, they're all built the same. You know, it's just by a different manufacturer.
But we haven't seen a chronic issue with all these chillers that came through?
No, because if we did, we would bring it to, you know, your attention.
Uh, any, Commissioner Ouatt?
So when Mr. Schwartz was going through the summer school, he said that it wasn't at Reed because there was work being done, but I don't see any work being done, so what's the work being done?
The Reed project was to repair the crack in the floor and refinish the cement floor. However, we, we did put it out for bid. However, we did put it out for bid, but for some reason, we have no bidders. Mr. Harmon is going to check with someone we thought would bid and we thought would do the work, but that person didn't bid. Chris will find out why. That refinishing would preclude anybody from being in that building because of the...it's not toxic, but it's noxious, the odor of the surface they put down. They were going to cut out a whole square of that concrete where the crack is, not try and put caulk in it again, re-pour a new one, and then refinish the floors as they were when the building was accepted.
So that begs the question that if you didn't get somebody to bid it, and we don't know if anybody's going to do it, why aren't we then having summer school there?
We don't know...we didn't know until two days ago we had no bidder, and we're trying to contact that person to see if he's still interested. And if we put it off for bid again, if he would do it. But if that's the case, and we find out...
And then at what premium price do we pay when they realize there's no other game in town? I mean, we bid things for a reason. I guess that's the conundrum we're in, right? That if we call the guy we thought was going to bid and tell him nobody bid, and he knows he doesn't have any competition, didn't we just drive up our price?
This is the company that did the original job at Reed when it was built, Elegant Concrete. And he also came to Reed to look at the repair, and so he gave us an estimate on how much it was going to cost, what he thought, and we thought he was very interested. He came to the walkthrough, the bid walkthrough, but he didn't bid, so we're trying to find out why. He seemed to have the interest and the expertise.
Then the natural follow-up, Bob, and then I'll leave you alone, is it's not under warranty? That he's going to get to come back and kind of do the job twice for double the money?
The Reed school was accepted, and the day it opened, the crack was there.
That's right.
There was an agreement with former employees that they would allow that crack to be caulked, and that the architect on the project gave a statement saying that it added some type of beauty to it, so it would look more like new.
Authentic, yeah.
So we did go through that last year, I recall vividly. But we're attempting to get the money from the state alliance grant to repair it entirely and re-put it back as if it were new.
Thank you. I was unaware of the history. Thank you.
So was I.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Bob, I see that Walsh is getting floors done in classrooms, but I had put in complaint about the hallway on the...I guess it would be the first floor.
Right.
Where it could be a danger to the kids because the tile was coming up and a lot of it was missing. Are the hallways going to be done as well as the classrooms?
I talked to Chris about it right after you asked about it. I'll let him answer you.
Basically, what we're doing is we're going to take up sections of the floor and then redo it. So yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were doing that...as soon as, basically, I took over, I put one of the masons in there for a while, and he was taking care of certain areas that I just...
Yeah, because I did see some of the tile was replaced, but then there was some of it still.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a question in terms of painting. I know I don't see Kingsbury on the list, and this, quite frankly, is...needs an upgrade. Do we have any idea when Kingsbury will be painted? Is it on the list somewhere?
What I would like to do is if the principal can give me a list, what I could do is keep the list, and then when I'm finished with the projects that I've got for the summer projects, I can go and start doing these.
All right.
Right now, just so you know, what we have is we have two painters and a foreman. Okay? So that's where we're at with the amount of schools that we have. So we're trying to do our best.
No, I realize that, yeah.
And I realize that, you know, there's always more that we can do.
Just so you know how the process goes, these projects were generated by request from the principals to the ILDs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Look forward to seeing the playgrounds.
Just a point of information, the three pools that were replacing the filtration systems, Crosby, Willby, and Westside, they are not going to be in service for most of the summer, but we've adjusted schedules so that the park department can use Kennedy in the morning and PAL will use it in the afternoon. If we get lucky and we get these back repaired earlier, then we can open up Westside or Crosby or Willby whenever they're completed. But right now, they're done. They've been drained, so the contractor could get in as early as possible and do the work.
Okay. Commissioner Hernandez?
Sorry, as I'm looking over this list, the plumbing, I also don't see Walsh on the list for new water bubblers. Is that because of the water issue?
Well, what we decided to do was not to put that water bubbler...well, those two, I forget how many it was, back in service. Because it would require not only digging out the wall, but digging to the line in the street to find out where the source of lead was. Because remember, we did put in brand-new, lead-free-certified bubblers, and we still had that issue. So, and the test we got back when we did the static and dynamic testing, the results didn't really pinpoint whether it was within the first five feet, the next 10 or 15. So we've made a decision not to reopen those two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Some people bubblers, but they're red stuff.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm told that he's exceeding all expectations.
All right.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll chase you out of town. Don't worry.
Kathy, I had a question. Are any of our workforce board students working in our summer school program? Remember, there was a couple of...
At this point, we have allocated significant dollars to the PAL to run an after-school program. We believe there are 75 tutors that will participate this year.
Wonderful.
We are also looking at putting a robust year-round program and hoping that at least half of those students would continue in a year-round tutoring program and perhaps lead to some recruitment of paraprofessionals or teachers coming out of that cohort of kids.
That's awesome.
So it has been a very successful program. Hats off to Chief Spagnolo and Roxanne Oggielli, who thought that up years ago and have made that a success. It did have a hiatus last year because of the lack of state funding, but it is back strong this year.
I'm glad because it was a great program, and I knew it wasn't their last year, so I'm very happy about that. Okay. Seventeen, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Eighteen, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests, superintendent's notification to the board. And I don't believe we have executive session, so...
Special meeting.
Yes. So I will adjourn this meeting. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. And we will get ready for the special meeting. Anybody want to take a break?
No.
Just stand two minutes?
No.
Stretch, nothing? Okay, we'll move right to it. Oh, we got to start, okay. We ready, Dave?
Second 30 minutes.
Special meeting.
The public doesn't mind missing the pledge allegiance for the second time.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education at Kingsbury School. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Commissioner Adorno, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner...
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Ferriello?
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
Present. Okay, on the agenda, Commissioner Awad?
Yeah, I'm sorry, couldn't see it. I can't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. No, no, that's fine.
Can I ask Commissioner Adorno to just read it?
Sure. Commissioner Adorno. Oh, thank you. Vice President Harvey reminded me that I have to find if there's any member of the public who would like to speak. Seeing none? Thank you. Return to order, regular order of business. Okay, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of Department of Education's 2018 and 2019 operating budget $158,375,000, Board of Alderman's adopted appropriation. $12,628,300, Alliance Year, seven. $450,000, 2016 through 2017. Surplus, $575,000 for 2015 through 2016. Surplus, $675,000, contingency surplus, and $500,000, city non-lapsing contingency. Respectfully submitted. Second.
Discussion.
Under discussion.
Commissioner Awad?
I want to thank Doreen for her time and efforts. I think that the process was open. It was fair. We heard a lot of discussion. We listened. We made some changes based on input from certain groups that were adversely affected in the initial draft of this. I do want to say that I am looking forward to seeing how the restructuring in central office works. I think the information that we heard tonight earlier speaks volumes to the steps that we're taking. I also think that under Mr. Henry's leadership, we've gotten to a place where in the next couple of weeks, as we begin the opportunity to interview candidates to be the new superintendent and lead the district, that we're giving them the tools to hopefully be successful with this budget, and we'll look for them to come back to us during the year with potential suggestions and alterations to it. But again, I think it's...I'm pleased with it. I would always, as any of us, like more, to do more, especially to put it in the classroom where we think will have the best impact. But I believe we did a fair job, I won't say a good job, but a fair job of putting the dollars where they'll do the best services.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I would echo Commissioner Awad's comments. I'd like to thank Doreen, great job. Darren, not terrible job. Superintendent W. St. Patrick Henry, thank you. Kathy, yourself, thank you for leading that committee through what is always a tough process. I think overall, it's an okay budget. I think we could do better. I think as we are now starting to tap some contingency funds that were very well thought out and placed years ago, and thank God we did, because we're quickly learning that this money goes fast and increases aren't coming readily. So, you know, as we adopt a budget tonight, I imagine, I think with each decision we make going through the rest of this fiscal year and future fiscal years, we have to remember that every time we approve a contract, every time we create a job, every time we do everything, there's a dollar amount associated with it. And I think sometimes, and I'm just as guilty of it, we approve a lot of stuff, and then the bill comes due the next budget year, and we start scratching our head and wondering who the heck spent all this money. So as we go through this next fiscal year, I would, you know, ask us to be cautious and be prudent with the money being spent because we're going to quickly start working through some of the contingencies we rightly built in. So let's just keep a...if we can keep that in mind every time we make a decision going forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. First off, I hope that a number of people in the public that complain about the budget equals the number of people from the public in the audience tonight. That would be great. So obviously, there's not as much concern as people try to tell us over the next 12 months. I struggle every year with the budget, and there's a lot of reasons for it. There's not a lot to really pick on when it comes to the operating budget. Doreen, you can correct me, but my math in public is in the ballpark of about 75% is salaries. Okay? So you're really trying to operate a school outside of salaries, that's, of course, operation, but you're trying to do the rest of your job on 25% of what we're allotted to spend. Very challenging. And that aside, I still would like to see us do a better job in two areas. Utilization of grant funding. I did make a request a while back, and I know we're in a busy time right now with budget and a superintendent search, to review the last few years of the budget of the grants we received and how we spent that money. And especially how we spent that money verse the so-called statement of work of what that money should have been spent on. I'm sure it's fine. I would still like to see how we're utilizing those funds because it's how we survive. As far as alliance, I still think we could do a much better job. I know selfishly, I'll say that we've struggled and have not been able to put forward ELA curriculum in search of spending $1.2 million for a six-year plan. $1.2 million is a pretty small percentage of what we're spending in a lot of areas. So I still think we need to do a much better job. And because of that, and Commissioner Vanstone's mentioning of things that get added on later, the leach accounts that come along along the way, especially with job creation, many at a pretty good price tag. And even though we put it against grant money, in many cases, not all, but in many cases, those also are bargaining unit positions. Meaning, in two years, when a smaller grant disappears, which it will, we're on the hook for that person to remain employed. So we've been way too loose with the checkbook. We're all guilty because at the end of the day, we, as a team, approve it, regardless of what the vote may be on a given night. It's on us all. So to that point, I will not be voting for this because I still think we need to check our Ps and Qs and do a much better job on how we spend money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Any other business before us?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.